I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening this Tuesday, July 22nd, 2025. I've got a few changes that we need to make to the agenda, so I'm just gonna kinda run through them and then I'll ask for a motion. So on the consent agenda, I'd like to move 3D into the regular agenda. And we'll address-
You mean routine business?
Yep, under our regular business on the agenda. The routine business, yep, 3D routine business, I'd like to move that to regular business. Then, I'm gonna need to move commission reports and public comment for items not on the agenda to the front of the meeting. And then, we're gonna have an executive session, and then I need to add a Justice Center update to our regular business, and that will be ahead of the public hearing on the on-sale liquor license.
Motion to approve, Otten?
Thank you, is there a second?
I second it.
I've got a motion and a second, any discussion? Any other public input on the agenda lineup?
You know, Scott Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. We were forced to move public comment to the end of the meeting, and now the last couple of meetings, it's been moved to the front of the meeting, and I just don't quite understand what's going on here, but it doesn't seem quite right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, if not, then Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. So then, moving on into our consent agenda, can I get any public input on items on the consent agenda as far as the lineup is concerned? All right, if there is none, can I-
For approval, Madam Chair?
Thank you much, do I have a second?
Second, Otten?
Got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, all right, motion carries. So first thing that we're gonna do are commission reports. Anybody have commission reports they'd like to make?
I do.
Go ahead.
We want to congratulate Commissioner Jim Schmidt, South Dakota's longest-serving county commissioner, was appointed to the Board of South Dakota Governor's Office of Economic Development on Friday, July 18th, and if you wanna pass that card to him, that would be awesome. And I also attended the UDC, the Urbanized Development Meeting, on Thursday, July 10th. This is one of three committees of the Sioux Falls Metropolitan Planning for the Metro Transportation Planning Process. I attended a meeting on Monday, July 14th, with the T-City Administrator with my husband, Senator Ernie Otten, regarding property taxes, TIFs, future expansion, and legislation. And then, I attended the Lincoln County Soil Conservation Board Meeting with Paul Anderson in Canton on Tuesday, July 15th, and I attended the Planning and Zoning Meeting as a Lincoln County Commissioner rep last night. And lastly, I want to thank my husband, Senator Ernie Otten, for making the motion on the Project Prison Reset Task Force on July 8th to remove whirling from the list of potential men's prison sites, thus removing all potential sites from Lincoln County.
All right, thank you for that. Anybody else have reports they'd like to make?
Madam Chair? Thank you, Commissioner Otten, I just wanna clarify one thing. I know you, some of you think he's been around for a long time, but the, actually, probably the current longest chair. There have been commissioners that have served much longer than I have, I think there was a gentleman over in Turner County that served over 35 or 40 years and things like that, and it was an honor. The other thing that I wanna report on, Madam Chair, is our auditor and I were in Philadelphia last week for the board meeting of the National Association of County Officials, where we spent the majority of time talking about the impact that the legislation, this big bill that was passed by Congress, as to what that's going to impact local, state, and our county government and schools. There'll be about a trillion dollars of transfer that will come down to the states and to counties that we're going to have to deal with in the future. So that was one thing, and we spent a lot of time talking about the farm bill, and how that has been kinda mired in a lot of different issues. I don't know that the ag portion that we deal with, the ag subsidies that come, you know, on the situation, most of it gets tied up in development and in food, and food for kids and things like that. We'll have a much more extensive report, and if you go online, I think that Sherri has put that on our website, and there are lots of things you can read about how counties are gonna have to pick some of that up, so if you're looking for some late-night reading, you can plug into that.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. Any other commission reports? I think a birdie told me that Sheriff Swanson would like to say something during report time.
Well, before he gets up here, Madam Chair, I just wanna say, Commissioner Schmidt, I didn't realize I was in the presence of historical significance, and maybe we'll have to get you your own historical marker now, but in all seriousness, I do wanna congratulate you on your appointment, but also upon reaching that milestone, so congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, we just have a couple of life-saving awards we would like to present, if we could get Billy Joe Rothenberger and Kent James Walls to come forward. We had an incident where we ate that we'd like to recognize a couple members of the public for.
Awesome.
Awesome.
And if anybody knows Sergeant Colshaw, and he's very wordy, so I'm making him read these. I'm just here for the photo op.
Apologize in advance, then. All right, this is a summary of the events that happened on July 26, 2025, at 10:17 a.m. Lincoln County Dispatch received a 911 call from an unknown person at Lake Alvin about a person not breathing. The caller did not provide any location information or details as to what was happening. When Lincoln County deputies arrived on scene, they located Billy Rothenberger near the entrance station, directing them where they needed to go, which was needed due to the lack of call information deputies received. Billy continued to direct other first responders to the swim beach as they arrived. During the investigation, deputies learned that a 15-year-old boy and his father were outside the swim zone at Lake Alvin, and both started struggling to swim and stay afloat. The mother, who also could not swim, started yelling for help. Billy heard the calls for help as she was preparing her stand-up paddleboard to go on the lake. Billy immediately started paddling out to help. Billy was able to get the father back to the raft that he had to keep him afloat. By now, the boy had gone underwater. Billy paddled over to where he was last seen, and with some help from the nearby father directing her where to go, Billy located the boy's body that was completely underwater and unresponsive. Billy put a life jacket and her paddleboard underneath the boy and paddled him back to shore. Kent Walls, who was fishing down the shoreline, heard the commotion and went over to help. Kent quickly realized or recognized that the boy was unresponsive and not breathing. Kent immediately started CPR on the boy. After several compressions, Kent was able to revive the boy to where he started coughing up water and eventually started to breathe on his own. Without Billy's quick actions, the father may not have been able to reach the raft and keep himself afloat, and the boy would have slipped further under the water where she would not have been able to see him. Combined with Kent's immediate initiation of CPR to get the boy breathing again, it is quite likely two lives would have been lost that day. The Lincoln County Sheriff's Office would like to thank these two heroes for their life-saving efforts at Lake Alvin on July 6th, 2025.
Thank you.
They're both being presented with a life-saving award and a gold Sheriff Challenge Coin for their efforts, the only sheriff hands out to people.
She's a real hero, she had the strength of bringing them in, that was incredible.
Thank you.
What a way to start, good start.
Thank you.
That is a good start. All right, any other commission reports then? All right, if there are none, the next thing I'm gonna ask for is public comment for items that are not on the agenda. If anybody would like to come up.
Linda Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. I just wanted to talk about something that we've been talking about the last two or three commission meetings, and that's about the vehicles that are in the Lincoln County fleet. On the sheet that Commissioner Otten was able to put together, she has 72 vehicles, and I believe that we might be missing a few on that, because the state's attorney did say that they use, had gotten sheriff's vehicles used, that have been used, too, and I just wanted to make sure that we have the total number. It was brought up that we have 173 employees and these 72 vehicles, and I just was hoping that during the next part of this discussion, that we could be having people who have turned in their civilian, when they use a civilian vehicle, their own vehicle, that we should see their mileage, so that we can actually determine what departments actually need vehicles, and then to continue to discuss having a motor pool or a vehicles not assigned to specific businesses, except for the sheriff and the highway department, that they are shared vehicles versus with only one program. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanna come up for public comment for items not on the agenda? All right, if not, then I ask for a motion to go into executive session under SDCL 125 to sub 3 and sub 4.
So moved, Otten?
I'll acknowledge the motion from Commissioner Otten, a second from Commissioner Schmidt. Will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes. Come out of executive session?
So moved. Second.
I've got a motion from Aaronz and a second from Otten. Will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. All right, now, the next thing we're gonna have is a Justice Center update from Julie, who is with Tegra Group.
Do I have to push anything to make that-
On that dot cam.
Oh, there we go.
Got it?
Yeah.
And then, can you blow it up a little bit? There we go.
Can I?
No. The powers that be in the IT room back there.
Exactly. Well, good evening, and I am Julie Dotson with Tegra Group, I'm here to give an update on the Lincoln County Courthouse project. As you've drove by, you've probably seen that we've made pretty good progress out there, it's looking very nice. Right now, as you can kinda see, the enclosure is pretty much completed, all the structural steel is installed, the precast is installed, we are working on the roofing membrane right now, we're about 50% done with that. The first and second floor slabs are complete, and the slab on grade is about 60% complete, we have just the lobby to pour out. You can kinda see in that photo as well, the framing has started on the second and third floor. So, the end of the summer, our big milestone is to be completely watertight, so we'll be installing windows and curtain wall in the next two weeks, end of summer, all weather-tight, so we can have more of a controlled climate within the building. On the exterior, we are pouring some large planters the end of this week, grading has started, all the utilities for water, stormwater, sanitary, have been started on site. It will connect onto West Street this coming spring and summer, so we'll be continuing to work with the city of Canton, along with the residents in that area, as we continue with that utility work, 'cause it will impact those residents as we tear up that road. And then, let's see, we'll do asphalt by the end of the year, our first layer of that, trying to keep the site clean. Coming up this fall and winter, we will continue inside with ductwork, equipment, plumbing, mechanical, electrical, and then probably spring, summer is when the finishes start, we'll do, you know, painting, carpet, all that kind of fun stuff, and then the final completion is in the fall of 2026. But yeah, everything is going well, we're on time, the budget's going well, and we would invite this group to come visit, if we would wanna schedule a time, we have stairs now and nice, clean floors, so it's a good time to take a visit, so you guys can see all the good work that's happening out there. So if anyone has any questions?
Anyone have any questions for Julie?
Okay.
All right, well, thanks for coming around.
No problem.
I'll ask for public input on the present Julie's presentation, if there is any.
Get my sheet up there.
All right, if not, then we are gonna move on to what was on routine business, item 3D. And Franny, this was your agenda item, right?
No.
Whose agenda item was it?
It was actually Sherri's, we put it on monthly, to give you guys the information from our end of month that we do, and then we had a constituent reach out asking questions about it, so then I was asked to provide an update.
Okay, you wanna go ahead?
Sure, so Franny Hill, for Lincoln County Treasurer, so on the treasurer's report, like county auditor's report with the treasurer, we do list on there that there is a difference between the pooled cash report versus the treasurer's daily spreadsheet. We have been working diligently on this, I have been working with the finance officer and the auditor's office, we've been working with the state auditors, they are aware of this. We are about 99% certain that it is from a fund investment that was put on the spreadsheet incorrectly, and we just are not fixing it until we have the bank recon caught up and we can verify that everything else matches, and then we will do the adjustment on there.
All right, anybody have any questions for treasurer?
Do you have any timeline of when you think that that's gonna be resolved?
So, the auditor's office is doing the-
From January 24, right?
Bank recon, yep. So we actually had a consistent amount, we were gonna do an adjustment to take that off, and then, I wanna say February of 25, we had found out at that point that we were not accounting for the Justice Center interest on investments correctly, so when we did that, we did a lot of journals to work with the state auditors to try to get the amount to where it should be, and in that process is where it was just put on the spreadsheet incorrectly. But I wanna make sure nothing else is missed, I wanna make sure bank recon is completely caught back up before we do that. I know the finance officer is working very hard on that, she is just a couple months behind, so I'm hoping here in the next month or two, it will be all caught up and we'll be able to take that and make that adjustment.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, anybody else have any questions? All right, if not, is there any public input on our treasurer's report?
Linda Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota, Madam Chair and Commissioners, I brought this to Commissioner Otten's attention, and she did listen, and she took action. I think whenever I see on a routine business or consent agenda where we have a discrepancy of 418,591 and 65 cents, which is an unusual number to begin with, and that has been not reconciled for a year and a half, I as a taxpaying citizen do get concerned, and it does, I thank the treasurer for coming up and trying to say that this is coming to an end, where that they're going to be able to put it back together, but it still concerns me that if I hadn't brought this forward, how much longer would it have taken to get this reconciled? And if it takes a year and a half to get that much money reconciled, I have a real concern about that as a citizen and a taxpayer, and that's why I wanted it brought forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on the report?
Good evening again, Scott Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. Now, there's $83 million that says in cash on hand. That disturbs me a little bit. I don't know exactly what that means, but when there's almost a half million dollars been in limbo for a year and a half, and it's put on routine business, that doesn't seem like that should be routine business, and if it is routine business, there's something wrong here. It's a half a million dollars that's been unaccounted for for a year and a half, and that's routine? When does it become something other than routine, when it's a million, two million, five million? It disturbs me, that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input on the presentation? All right, if not, we are gonna move on to our public hearing to consider an application for a temporary on-sale liquor license to operate outside the municipality for Prosper Country Warehouse and Event Hall for events to occur on August 2nd, September 6th, and September 16th, 2025, located at Prosper Country Warehouse and Event Hall, 46620, 278th Street, Lennox, South Dakota, 57039, tract 3A of Pop and Giv's Edition in the southwest quarter of Section 28 Township 99, north, range 51 west of the 5th PM, Lincoln County, South Dakota. Is the applicant present? All right, would you like to come on up? And just go ahead and introduce yourself and tell us about your application?
Alexandra McLough of Lennox, South Dakota. I'm actually here on behalf of the bar that we consistently utilize, that is doing the, excuse me, I'm out of breath, I'm recently pregnant, so whenever I stand up, I get wet. But they are the ones that are actually doing the application, I'm on, I'm here on behalf of Dave, that owns multiple bars, so. The application is for a day liquor license, we do them frequently, you guys have approved them in the past, which I appreciate, but yeah, that's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any proponents for the application in the audience? Any opponents? All right, if there are none, then we'll close testimony, and any commission discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, got a motion and a second. Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. All right, next on our agenda is another public hearing for an appeal on our decision by the Lincoln County Planning Commission to approve conditional use permit number USE 00142025, to allow for the expansion of the agriculturally-related operation milk condensing plant on the property described as Lot A, tract 1, Van Beek Edition, northeast Quarter, Section 34, Township 97 North, range 51 West, Delaware Township. The opponents are Ethany Ert of Brooklyn, Ethany Ert, 46747, 291st Street, Brooklyn Township Officers and Supervisors, Delaware Township Officers and Supervisors. The applicant property owner is Red Rock Real Estate LLC, and the location is at 29019468 Avenue. Toby, were you gonna? Go ahead, all right.
Thank you for even all that, Madam Chair, so.
You bet.
I appreciate that, so. Yeah, Toby Brown, Robeson County Planning. So this item again before you is an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of a conditional use permit for the expansion of an agriculture-related operation. Subject parcel is approximately six and a half miles northwest of the city of Beersford, as shown on the screen there. Subject parcel is 20 acres in size, as you can see, it's owned A1 agricultural, as is all adjacent properties. Subject property, as you can see, is developed. Use 00102023, which was appealed and upheld by the Board of Commissioners, allowed the construction of approximately 47,000 square foot building that is used for RO. In layman's terms, that's removing the water from the milk that comes into the facility. And so, this, the screenshots here would show pictures that staff's taken looking to the north, the east would be across the road, the west would be looking onto the facility, the south would be looking down on the adjacent property. So the applicant did approach county staff, identified that they would like to do an expansion to the existing facility. The expansion is approximately 13,048 square feet. Staff notified the applicant, or the individuals, that per the approval of the existing conditional use on the property, which is use 00102023, it does require, any expansion would require a new conditional use permit. So with that notification, the applicant did submit a new application for the facility. The new application wouldn't negate the existing conditional use from the property, or the existing seven conditional use, or conditions that were on that conditional use permit. So staff did review this application, really took a look at what the existing footprint of the facility was, discussed with the applicant multiple times exactly what the proposed expansion would be. As I mentioned earlier, the current facility is an RO-type facility, this expansion will allow them to go to UF facility, which is an ultra filtration facility, which will allow them to remove the whey from the milk, or separate, I should say, separate the whey from the milk. That whey will be utilized for the dairies as rationing in their feed operations. So we did, the Planning Commission did actually conduct two public hearings for this application. There was an abundant amount of concern, the staff acknowledges, with the silage trucks that are going throughout the county. The silage trucks, for those who don't know, are feed for the actual, for the cows, and so I'll talk a little bit about kind of the existing area out there, the neighborhood, and about what exists out there. So this is essentially, this is the parcel browser showing the surrounding area. So in 2013, the county approved a KFO on this parcel right here, is a separate parcel, separate identified ownership. And then in 2016, the county also approved on this separate parcel, additional, or a new conditional use permit for a KFO on that facility as well. So the KFO is where the actual, the dairy cows are located. And then in 2021, the county approved a conditional use permit for East River Electric to construct a substation on this, on this location, on this parcel right here. And then in 2023, the county approved a conditional use permit for an RNG facility, which is located here, on this parcel. And then also in 2023, as I mentioned, the county approved, and the Board of Commissioners upheld, the Planning Commission's approval of a conditional use permit for the RO facility that's located here. So throughout the public hearing process, we've really heard comments from the public about the silage trucks. And the silage trucks is during the harvest, is a harvest process, and so it's limited to the harvest times of the year, but it's, it's through contract process, and so there's a lot of activity going on, and acknowledge that really, the issue that I would say from staff's perspective, is it's traffic safety related, a lot of concerns with obeying the traffic regulations that exist whether on a township road, county road. And so, and part of that is that through our department, through the planning and zoning, these issues or complaints aren't zoning-related, they're also not, they're not an- They're also not, they're not an item that's covered by the county's nuisance regulations. But again, as staff, we acknowledge that there is some concerns. However, those trucks do not go to the facility that's before you this evening. Those trucks go as feed to these two KFO facilities that were approved in 2013 and 2016. Again, fully acknowledging that there is an issue. Staff is working with individuals, but there needs to be continued discussion and dialogue on those types of issues, or continued enforcement through the zoning process, too. In addition to that, so as mentioned, the Planning Commission did approve, I'll go to this part right there. So as mentioned, the Planning Commission did approve a conditional use permit for the 1-1, use 001425 to allow U F ultra filtration. So again, this doesn't, this is in addition to the existing use 00102023. But with these, the Planning Commission did approve with the six conditions that are listed on the screen right now. And so staff did recommend the first four conditions, and then after the public hearing process, the Planning Commission added additional, not number five and number six. So I've had discussions with our highway superintendent. He was aware and didn't object to condition number six. The, I guess the applicant is working with the highway department to complete a traffic impact study. And so for those of you who are aware or not aware is that typically, as part of a change in use or a driveway permit, especially the state of South Dakota, would require a traffic impact study to determine if there's any roadways improvements. So this wouldn't meet that criteria, but my understanding is the applicant and the highway superintendent have come to an agreement that they would in advance do the study to identify if there's any roadway improvements that would need to be done to the county highway, which is a, is a means of access to this facility. And so with that, I'll gladly answer, turn it back to the chair and answer any questions. What I would say is, as listed here, is in accordance with Lincoln County zoning regulations on an appeal, the Board of Commissioners has three options. That's either uphold, uphold the decision of the Planning Commission to overrule it, which would be to overturn it essentially, or amend the decision of the Planning Commission. And so amending the decision of the Planning Commission would be typically either modifying the, the conditions that were approved by the Planning Commission or adding to them through that process. And so what I would note is that we did also post a property, staff did mail adjacent property owners as well as the appellants. This is a little bit different process than where you typically see me stand before you as a policy-type decision. This, you're acting as a quasi judicial body, and the quasi judicial body is really evaluating if the approval, you know, if, if the approval is consistent with what the zoning regulations are in place, not creating new policy, not changing policy, just evaluating if it is with the current policy. And so it's a little bit different, too. Madam Chair, is that the appellants would go first tonight after staff's done with any questions that the board might have.
I have a question. On, on four, was that something that you brought forward, or was that added? I'm sorry if I missed that.
Yep, that was something that staff recommended, yes.
I, I'm not sure the county should be sitting in the position of a mediator between the, um,
Yep, that's the only condition.
Between the township, yeah, I, I don't even know, I don't know, that's very strange to me. I could see if they had mediated, or they had to meet to see if they could mediate it, but I don't know why we would put ourselves in the middle of it.
So that is in addition to-
Legally. I mean, that's just a legal thing in my brain going around.
Yep. In addition to the concerns of the traffic safety, Brooklyn Township, who's the adjoining township to the south, the facility is within Delaware Township, but Brooklyn Township as well has been trying for some period of time to get a road haul agreement with the applicant, as well as there has been standing litigation that's been settled with Brooklyn Township and the applicant as well. So by any means, one of the conditions that was on the previous permit is that we do an annual meeting with the townships and the applicant. We have completed that. One of the things that staff's really identified is that there's, there needs to be communication between those two bodies. And so if there's any way that the county can help be a part of the solution to that, it's certainly re-recommended, but certainly the board can modify that condition. With that, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back to you and answer any questions that the board may have for staff at this time.
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions for Toby?
I don't necessarily have a question for Toby, but can we have Sheriff Swenson come forward? I know at planning and zoning, they had a lot of people here, and you're probably going to hear again tonight about the traffic down there, although this doesn't really have to do with this one, but the traffic is a huge issue down there, and many of the neighbors are concerned that they don't have a sheriff or staffing presence down there, especially during the silage hauling, which is like two weeks. And so I'm just wondering if you could address that?
Okay. And as you know, Commissioner Otten, I received a text from you this morning regarding this, so I had, I had Patrol put together some numbers on that. And we obviously get the complaints from the public on this stuff. So in 2024, we started, I went back to 8:30 to 9:14, we had fourteen calls for service in fourteen days. So that's calls for service that were generated by our officers. And one of those would include, we went to the dairies and, and gave safety briefings to, to the contract hauler at the owner's request. So we had deputies go down there, discuss the stop sign complaints, the speeding complaints, and then we had deputies assigned to that location. There was, and I won't try to count them right now, but a half a dozen traffic stops for five over, four over, nine over, not, not huge speed violations, but, but the, we were definitely very active in it. On any given time, we have four deputies working in the county, to include our contract coverage in Harrisburg. Last year, we, we had three hundred and fifty traffic complaints. That's people calling in complaining about traffic. So one a day, so to speak, but we're doing it, we're down there. We actually have a deputy who is here, that lives right over there, and he, so he takes it personal, because he has two little kids that, and they're out running on the highway and stuff, and he, he was part of the safe, remember the jam is, by the way?
Always the jam.
But I would like him to come up and just discuss what he's done personally, and the, the stuff that, that he's, he sees down there, and the, and it's being addressed. We've, I have emails that we've sent the Highway Patrol to help us with overweight complaints, because we don't have the capability to weigh trucks. That's, that's a Highway Patrol function. And, and there is no sheriff's department in South Dakota that has the capacity to do that, just because of the expense of, of the equipment to weigh trucks. So we've, we've reached out to them, we've, we've reached out to the owner, we've reached out to the contractors, and, and I'm open to suggestions, but we, we are definitely responding to the area. And like I say, the deputy lives right there, so.
Thank you, Sheriff.
You're welcome.
I have something, uh, I've got something here that Tom Erickson was killed by a contractor's driver a few days later on August 23rd.
Or a couple of days later than August 23rd, 2023.
Okay. And I did, I went back to August 30th, so I don't have that, that-
You don't have that, then. And then one more thing, there's actually like three silage runs with about twenty days or a little more. You've got the spring alfalfa and fall corn, and then you got some small grain silage. So this is a little bit more than just two weeks.
So, so to answer your question, we're also scheduled again this year to do another safety briefing with the, the company and the contractor. And, and we'll obviously give it as much attention as we can, but I just want to warn people, we have a five hundred and seventy-eight square miles to cover with four deputies at any given time. No excuse, we do our best, and we'll continue to do our best, and, and we can, we can do some specialized patrols again, but we are doing them in, in the, in the times that we can, and requesting other assistance from other agencies. And I'll be a little more vocal this year with the Highway Patrol to give us some more assistance on that, which, we're, we're working on some stuff with them right now, anyway. And hopefully we'll get some more assistance with overweight trucks and the, and the, you know, they're just, they're just a good support staff.
Did your deputy want to come up, or?
Sure. Yes, he does.
Like Sheriff Swenson said, I live in that area, and I do take this personal. So everybody that has complaints about silage trucks, and also the manure haulers, that is a natural thing that happens at dairies. They have a lot of truck traffic. And that fatality accident that you spoke of, that was in 2023, the stats we just checked last year, just for a quick reference, but in 2023, I responded to that. I rolled up on that scene, and I saw the guy laying in, the guy who got ejected from the tractor that had ran that stop sign, and then the vehicle that had burnt up. So I do take it serious. So that's only three miles from my house, I drive by it all the time, and I, I don't, when I assign my deputies down to do those traffic complaints, it is strict enforcement. It's not, hey, give everybody warnings, it's strict enforcement. When I go down there, even if I don't see violations, I'll stop and talk to them, and I'll have them radio on their C B to the other trucks saying, hey, I'm down here, there's no brakes. I'm out there all the time. The milk trucks, I will say, most of you probably know this, the milk trucks, they are so respectful, and they drive very, very slow. Silage trucks, they're from out of town, they drive, they're, they're, they mean business, they're, they're driving steady. Every time that I've been down there, I have never once caught one going over nine miles an hour, over the speed limit. Now, a lot of people, when they call and complain, it's because they're on gravel roads. And rightfully so, we live in a very peaceful area, and in a couple of weeks, it's truck, 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 and it creates a lot of noise, and a lot of dust, and it's constant. A lot of people think they're speeding on the gravel roads, they're actually not, it's just a lot of noise and dust. And trust me, if they're speeding on the gravel roads, I would nail them.
What is the speed limit on gravel roads?
It's fifty-five unless it's posted thirty-five, or whatever the township adopts. What's that?
Thank you. Does anybody have questions for a deputy?
Yeah, I have a couple, of course.
No, it's just for Commissioner right now, sorry, sir. Any commissioners have questions for a deputy?
Thank you.
Any more for the sheriff going on? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And then, since this is an appeal, first we'll take testimony from the appellants. Am I doing that correctly, Drew? All right, we'll take testimonies from, testimony from the appellants. And so normally, the way this gets flipped around, appellants have ten minutes total when they first present, but I'm going to go ahead and give appellants, um, I'm going to, I'm going to do twenty, I'm going to do forty-five minute blocks. So appellants will have forty-five minutes, and that will include anybody else that wants to have input on the, or provide testimony on the appeal itself. So it is 7:33, so we can start the clock, and if the appellants are present, I would open the floor for them to come up at this time.
Good evening to all of you. I am Bethany Eric. I reside at 46747, 291st Street, Centerville, South Dakota, 57014. I am a half mile south of this operation. I'm the canary in the coal mine. I'm the one here to tell you a little bit about what we've got going on there, and what I fear will happen if you approve and uphold the approval of this permit. Truthfully, hearing Toby's report, I'm appalled. I feel ignored. I feel dismissed. None of my concerns were addressed. So I'm going to briefly address them tonight, so you guys have an opportunity to hear what I was concerned about. And I'll just kind of go through a few things, and hopefully you will see why I appealed this decision. The biggest part about where I live is the noise. That was disregarded. Isn't that funny? It wasn't even discussed tonight. But I'll tell you, is the overhead on, please? Okay. Anything that exceeds eighty decibels at a residence creates hearing damage. I have evidence that goes on and on and on. These are pictures of my front porch, timestamped 9:42 PM. So I really want to get that on the public record, that you folks know this noise is not going to go away. When we're talking today about adding, if we approve this, seventy-five trucks per day pass residences in our townships, that's crazy. I'm not the only one that's going to experience this. So you folks need to be aware that the noise levels exceed hearing safe levels. If you approve this, you're denying the opportunity to protect me. Furthermore, there are, it's lit up like a baseball diamond every night, and I recognize that there's going to be some lights there, because we want everybody to keep crime down. But that's what it looks like when I look from my driveway, past the highway, and out to their location. So since that was so blatantly disregarded, I wanted to hit that first, because I don't want to be ignored. This is a fact. We, we heard a little bit tonight about how the traffic has affected us already. If you uphold the approval of this permit, we're going to see exponentially seventy-five more trucks per day on our roads, adding to the problems we already face. Is that fair? Is that fiscally responsible to put that much traffic, four point one million pounds per day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year? Is that fiscally responsible? As county commissioners, I expect, and so do all of our taxpayers, that you are also fiscally responsible. And it doesn't appear to me that that is fiscally responsible when we could put it on Highway eighteen or forty-six, where it's where the taxpayer base is spread out. But that's just my opinion. Going back to one of my, my water concerns that were also disregarded, I'm going to bring this up. In the county comprehensive plant for 2050, number 146, right here, that's where my house is. The dairies are right up in here. Know what that blue means? Flood plain. Flood plain. That means water in excess of so many inches per day, or we've, we've had rainfall events that made floods happen. That's going to flood. All the chemicals, all of the food-grade lipids, and the fats from the overflow, because they don't have wastewater, you're like fishing, because that could go away. All right? Anything that they want to put out in their lagoons can flood over into the flood zone. That's my, my look at it. And furthermore, I do not, and I will never understand, how in the world? This is from the parcel browser on the Lincoln County website, okay? So here's my property, right down here. The orange lines represent Aquifer Protection District. Now, remember that, how in the world did they get a little pencil mark in between by the lagoons that are going to hold the wastewater from their processing plant? They're going to put four point one million pounds of milk through and clean it, and make everything work, going into those lagoons right by the aquifer that, oh, so happens to feed my well and everybody else's well that's downhill. We're downhill from these guys. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out, there's not if, it's when. We're going to achieve damage from this. So now that I've made my concern abundantly clear, and I hope it is never disregarded again, and it is on public record from here on out, I do hope, sincerely hope, that you folks are going to take this appeal and hear it for what it is, that you're going to protect our life, our safety and health, and our water. According to South Dakota codified laws, seven eight dash twenty, general power to the county commissioners. Number seven is to superintend the fiscal responsibility. So I'm going to bring you back to the idea that perhaps we should address the physical concerns if we're going to spend this much money modifying a little tiny county road when we could put it somewhere else. This, number fourteen, in the South Dakota codified law- Number 14 in the South Dakota codified laws regarding county commission powers that be, to enact ordinance to regulate and protect and to keep any offensive matter out of highway, public bound body or stream of water within our county. So you have every right to say, not here, not now. It's not that I'm against the dairy. I want, you know, if growth is going to happen, fine, good, let it happen not next to my house and not in my neighborhood and not in my townships where we're not prepared to have the resources to handle it. I'd like to wish them well, but I'd like to wish them well on somewhere, in somewhere else. Do not ignore us. Do not make us, as the Lincoln County landowners, taxpayers and family farms, this organization's collateral damage. It belongs in the municipality. It belongs with wastewater treatment, not anywhere near where it is. We're involving this much resources, we need to get it into a municipality. Nowhere near an agricultural area. Put it, don't put it on flood plain. Don't put it in aquifer protection district. Come on. It's, you know, I hope you guys see my point. Have I brought forward some things that brought you to any questions, point of issues, questions at all?
Any commissioners have questions for the appellant?
Okay. Thank you for your time. I'll turn it over to the next speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll take appellants from Delaware Township.
AJ Swanson, 27452 482nd Avenue, Canton. I'm an attorney admitted to practice in this state and I am privileged to appear tonight on behalf of both Brooklyn and Delaware Townships. I believe there will be one or two, or perhaps more township officers who will want to express their views in addition to what?
AJ, are you going to speak to both Brooklyn and Delaware at the same time then? Are you going to separate them?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll hear both of those right now, if you're okay with that.
Sure. Yeah, I'm going to speak jointly for both townships and there will be individual officers who will speak. Much of what I have in support of this appeal, I have already written and put on the board's record, at least I trust they're there, I think Toby has sent them along, a June 18th letter that has Exhibit A attached, a July 8th letter to Toby, and that has Exhibits A through H attached. And then today, I realized that something I had mentioned in a prior letter had actually been replaced by an updated administrative ruling from Washington. And I have written a letter dated July 22, that's today, to Drew DeGroot, and whether he got that circulated or not, I have no idea. Drew, did you get that circulated?
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, I just have a few points that I would like to emphasize, if I may. The July 8th letter has an Exhibit G attached, and that is a list of chemicals that are used in this dairy process. We know nothing about the nature or the extent of these chemicals, and I certainly am not a chemist. I've read some of the data, safety, safety data reports and labels for some of these chemicals. It is my understanding that there is no pretreatment of wastewater from this facility. And to what extent or how these waters are then distributed or reused over other land areas and over an aquifer protection area, we have no idea because nothing is said about it. I know that there is an extreme concern on the part of township officers and supervisors and residents, as Bethany has just mentioned, about the potential infiltration of groundwater by these chemicals. We have no answers. Now, Chair Landin, I know you had asked about condition number four that had been imposed at the planning commission level. And that is, before a building permit is issued for this project, there is to be a road haul agreement with Brooklyn and the applicant or its affiliates. I'm going to entreat that you not consider removing that condition because, first of all, the township, which is the custodian and has the duty to repair the public roads that are used so intensively on this inbound traffic, the silage haul, which does run over the course of several months. We have no leverage over this applicant. We can't prohibit them from using the roads. There's no statutory mechanism for a township to invoke a road haul agreement. And the only time that a road haul agreement can be required is at the planning and zoning level. So I trust we're not going to consider removing that provision. We had proposed a road haul agreement. That was done sometime in May. We've made no progress on that with the applicant. At the last email with their counsel, I was told that we had to wait until tonight's proceeding was done and they knew the outcome. So we're still waiting on a road haul agreement. Long before I met the folks from Brooklyn, I believe they'd been attempting to get a road haul agreement in place with the applicant, and those efforts date back some years, perhaps even back to 2013. But we're always the optimist. The other point I would like to mention is the noise that is now emitted from the current operation, and that is a noise level that is emitted without even regarding whatever this expansion is going to bring. This is more than just processing and working with locally produced milk. Now, there are a number of other dairies, I understand, that will now make this site the focal point, their destination for product. I would expect the noise level will increase rather significantly over what is currently being shown and registered. I would add that the Exhibits C, D, E, and F to my July 8th letter are certainly indicative of that. Those were provided to me by Bethany. We think these are very high noise levels, registering in the high 80s, in the mid 90s. One, I think, was even in excess of 100 dBa. I would remind the board that if this were a wind farm, this operation would be in woeful state of noncompliance. Under Section 154.241 of your ordinance, the noise level from a wind farm is limited to 50 dBa at the property line containing the turbine. You'll recall that a movement from 50 to 60 dBa is 10 times more intense. Moving from 60 to 70 dBa is another 10 times more intense, so 100 times. And the record, recorded levels stated by Bethany and as are attached in Exhibits to my July 8th letter would suggest we are well at 100 times or better what a wind farm maximum would be. Finally, when language is given to the claim that this is an agriculturally related operation and thus is entirely apt for a conditional use permit in the A1 agricultural district, I would implore you to continue to read the provision of subparagraph Y of Section 154.058. Agriculturally related operations are to involve the handling, storage, transporting, and shipping of farm products. And I would submit to you that this particular product that is being produced is no longer a farm product. It may consume farm products, raw milk, but what it produces is condensed milk. Now, there's nothing in your ordinance about this, but for a, what I think is a close parallel, I would ask you to consider the effects of the, of all things, the Motor Carrier Act of 1935, which Congress adopted. Congress, ever since 1935, has given shipments moving in interstate commerce, which are, which consist of agricultural and horticultural commodities, a break from regulation. Those commodities, when moving by transport, by truck transportation, are not subject to the normal and ordinary rules that would apply to other carriers that are handling manufactured goods. As evidence of that, I would suggest that you consider, or would ask that you consider, the July 22 letter, which I addressed to Counsel DeGroot. And to that is attached an excerpt of 49 CFR, Section 372.115. And all that is, is a listing of those commodities that are not exempt under 49 USC, Section In essence, the statute focuses on what are unmanufactured agricultural commodities. At some point, farm products start raw and unprocessed. But as life goes on and they move up the food chain, they become manufactured, processed, and converted into other food products that are no longer exempt for purposes of this list. So the CFR site that I gave is actually Administrative Ruling 133. An Administrative Ruling 133, which is still in effect, would hold that condensed milk is not exempt. Now, that would suggest to me that one of the nation's leading regulatory agencies looked at this product, condensed milk, decided it was, in fact, a regulated product, it was not exempt, and thus it cannot be considered an unmanufactured food or agricultural commodity. That being said, I don't understand how this commission could then find and conclude that condensed milk, as a product now being shipped, manufactured from raw milk, is yet within the scope of subparagraph or subsection Y of your zoning ordinance pertaining to conditional use permits. I think this is a, you know, where are we going to stop? Is there going to be ice cream next? Is there going to be any other product that began as raw milk that they're going to produce? I don't know, but I think we are past that line at this juncture, and I would ask that this application, which makes this destination a focal point for so many other dairies, shipping raw milk in, is well beyond the burden that you should lawfully impose on other property owners, including residents and townships. Any questions?
Madam Chair, can I ask him a question?
Absolutely.
AJ, so the last time we had these folks in here, granted, it was a different parcel, technically under a different ownership entity. I assume the entities, though, all at some point in time share some kind of economic interest, or the people who control them all kind of answer to one?
I think they admit as much in their papers.
Okay, great. I kind of chewed some butt with regard to the township because I was concerned that the township wasn't exerting as much effort as what I thought they should have with regard to getting a road haul agreement. Now, when you were talking earlier, I just want to make sure I heard you correct. Did you say that you all tried to meet with them, but these folks said no meeting until after this meeting?
Yes, I had submitted a draft road haul agreement in, sometime in May, sent that to Attorney Seth Lepore, followed up with him a couple of weeks later and asked if there was a reaction. He said, we want to get together and talk about this, but I said, I want to know what your concerns or questions are before we just have a general meeting. That probably was enough to delay their interest.
Did they share the concerns with you?
No.
Okay. So, and then you all agreed to meet? You took my advice insofar as that, you agreed to sit down and talk, but now they didn't have a meeting with you?
I think that is a correct representation of what happened.
Now, was it because of just scheduling they couldn't get together with you? Or what was the reason?
Well, initially, when the planning commission hearing was coming up, there were two hearings, and I wasn't involved in the first hearing. I was involved in the second one, and I, I don't remember those dates, frankly. But coming up to the second hearing, they were very interested in scheduling a meeting, even a day or two or three or four before the planning commission. And it just didn't work out for my schedule to do that. The only requirement, I said, can you specify what it is in my draft agreement that you do not like or that you find unacceptable? And I didn't get any response on that.
So here's what I'm trying to figure out is tonight, if we got to make some kind of amendment, or if we got to have some discussion about number four. And I don't know if number four should be in the worded the way it is right now, but I want to figure out, what is the cost to the township? What do you all, you need a check for the damage done to the roadways. What is the dollar amount? And then what I want to hear from these folks is, what are they willing to pay? Because clearly, you all could not get together on your own, which is disconcerting. I don't know why you didn't do it. So I got to try to figure it out here tonight. So from the township's point of view, you need a check for a road haul agreement. How much do you need? What were the expenses of gravel before these folks came along and what are they now?
And we've given that number.
Well, what is it?
Well, in 2013, I believe the total cost was $45,000, give or take. And in 2024, the total cost was $95,000. Now, give or take?
Here's 24, here's 13. What's the difference?
Forty, okay, forty, so $43,000 in 2013, $90,000 in 2024. That's, that's an increase of somewhat more than 100%. And some part of that, and I calculated this at one time, about 9% of that was because the per load cost of gravel had increased.
Yeah, everything's got a cost. Did these folks agree to give something or not?
No.
They didn't agree, y'all didn't agree to give anything?
That's not true.
Well, how much?
We have not offered a dollar amount. We asked, I believe it was three, maybe four times.
Let's, let's do this. Yeah, let's just, let's do this.
So AJ, you all need 95 grand to pay for the roads, right?
Well, it's, it's an increase of $46,000 from one year to another.
Yeah, I get it, because you got to be some escalator or whatever in it to control for inflation. What else do you need besides a check? What else does township want besides, because a road haul agreement?
Only one person's going to talk at a time and you'll be in front of the podium when you do speak, please.
So we got, so we got some economic impact. There's some physical impact. What do you? What do you all want with regard to controlling the physical impact?
We, we were asking for a share of the total gravel bill at the end of the year, where we would report what that total bill was, and they would agree to a particular percentage. Meanwhile, uh, the township would undertake the road repairs required and provide the crew and, and the equipment.
Man, I have a question, AJ.
Yes.
Um, don't take this wrong, but normally, townships, uh, have an annual gravel budget. I mean, they have, I mean, Prairie Township, where I have, and my dad was their supervisor. Every year, they have so much gravel that they put on their roads. So, my question is, when you give us the number of what the cost would be, does that all dairy-related, or is there the normal amount of gravel which would be put on the township roads?
If, if two thousand thirteen was a good base point, and I think it is, that was two hundred and one loads that year. Last year, it was three hundred and forty. Now, people have come and gone through Brooklyn Township, but I can tell you with a high degree of certainty that the dairy is the only intensive use that has arisen in that ten or eleven-year period.
What was the three hundred number?
Uh, three hundred and forty loads in, of gravel in two thousand twenty-four.
All right.
Two hundred and one in two thousand thirteen.
So, basically, what you're saying is pre-dairy, post-dairy?
Right.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, that's all I have, unless there are other questions.
Anybody have any other questions? All right, then I'm going to open up to anyone that would like to speak on behalf of the appellants, and we've got about seventeen minutes left. So, if you'd like to do that on behalf of the appellants, and just, if you would, um, just for the record, speak to, if you're, if you're speaking to a particular appeal, or if you are speaking to all three of them cumulatively, or however you want to parse it out.
My name is Chad Baldwin. I'm with Delaware Township Supervisor, four-six-seven-four-three, two-hundred-and-eighty-seventh Street. I guess, I just have a speech, I guess, on behalf of some of the citizens and some of our concerns. I am pro-egg in every aspect of my life. My friends are farmers, my hobby of raising livestock revolves around it, and my profession is involved heavily in it. But this is not ag. This is an industry, this is bringing in a product and processing it and shipping it out. This is an endeavor that will bring increased traffic and safety concerns year-round, twenty-four hours a day. It requires resources and workforces while outside normal agricultural activity. In our area, we expect increased traffic in the spring and in the fall, understanding our normal ag practices. This is not one of them. Above all issues with this application, we simply want to know, when will it end? When will the residents get to have a say in how their neighborhood is shaped? When will we know the lifestyles that we have worked for won't be sacrificed in the name of economic progress? When will our elected officials support residents who must deal with the obstacles that these projects create and not simply be overwhelmed by deepest pockets? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak for one or more of the appellants?
Dwayne Carlson, two-nine-two-eight-seven, four-sixty-seventh Avenue, Centerville. I'm a Brooklyn Township Supervisor, and, um, I know we've got a road study that's happening for these, the intense traffic that's coming up, if this is approved, but the counter that was out was only out for a week. If they're going to do more, that's, that's great, but the counter that was, that was up sat there for a week, and what I'm looking for is, if we do a study there, we need to know what was, what road counts were from LTAP or from a resource from two thousand thirteen and right now, so you can see what the differences are in the traffic. This fifty or seventy-five trucks is going to be a significant impact, so you'll want a good study, and that isn't going to happen in a week. Hopefully, we can have a company like LTAP do a comprehensive study. I know that Brook, that Delaware Township has counters out right now, but they weren't able to get staffing to get the recorded counts that are in place. I'm a master drainage plan. Is there anything in that comprehensive plan, I haven't seen, that this company would be required to have a containment system for the facility that they're asking to put up now? There's a significant amount of riff and parking and office space proposed here, and that would bring a lot of water down through cropland that they don't own. It'll be some other constituent that has that, and I believe it's section fifteen. I just didn't see any containment for that put place. As well as, like they talked about before, the amount of water, is it contained when they're doing the cleaning facilities in a separate lagoon or a separate containment area? Because those cleaning supplies are different from what the manure would be into a lagoon, and I'm hoping that we're not going to find out that it is in the same lagoon. Most municipalities make them treat water back to a potable water before it can be put into their municipality lagoons. I know we're not there, we're in a separate ag area, but I think it was, uh, I had a, there's legislation that has come forward to make sure that those lagoons are, um, taken care of in a manner in which that does not seep into our aquifers, and I just don't see that here yet. Then the commercial industrial, what, what do you, as a board, feel commercial industrial is? I mean, this facility, in the way it is operating now, is not forty-two-hundred-and-fifty-head cows. They're, they're on record as saying they have fifteen thousand cows in these two facilities that we're talking about. All right, so, that facility is now changing the milk to away, and then now wanting to change it again. When you're changing that product, that's a manufacturing. You also have a gasification plant on the same facility. That, to me, is manufacturing industrial. That's not a family farm. It's not cows on grass, it's cows in stanchions and under roof. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come up and speak on behalf of the appellants? And I'm assuming if you don't identify, that you are speaking for all three appellants.
Steve Holberg, uh, four-six-five-five-one, two-hundred-and-ninety-third Street, Centerville, South Dakota. I'm on the Brooklyn Township and representing myself and them here. I was asked to, I guess, give a timeline of some of the things that have taken place in this area, you know? These entities are all in, in sections thirty-three, four, and five, and all, all basically have ownership of, of a particular family, and so I think the past history of what has happened in Brooklyn Township is relevant. You know, we were told before they came what good neighbors they would be, and this would all be good, and we agreed to a forty-two-hundred-and-fifty-head dairy in that area. But they came in before they actually had the facility built in the fall of two thousand and thirteen, and started cutting silage, cut silage on a day when it rained an inch and a half in the morning, we're out there in the afternoon. Uh, we're on our township roads, cut down through the roads, through the base, about a foot and a half. Uh, they did, and then they came and pushed the mud into our township road ditches. They did not contact Brooklyn Township or its supervisors, and brought in some sandy gravel to try to patch that up. Took us two years to try to get paid for the damages we had to repair, and I told them that they could no longer do anything like that. That was a requirement of the township to take care of our roads and the liability of them. July twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, uh, on two-hundred-and-ninety-second Street, silage trucks removed, uh, ran over intersection signs and tipped large culvert and caused a separation of the culvert and excessive damage there. August third, two thousand and nineteen, on two-hundred-and-ninety-second Street, contractors hauling manure for the dairy damaged road surface and cut down through the road base. Neither the contractor nor the dairy contacted Brooklyn supervisors. Uh, that was in a very expensive fix there, for, I think, thirty-nine thousand dollars. October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, contractors working for the dairy dug through our road on four-hundred-and-sixty-seventh Avenue and put in a plastic culvert before a permit was authorized from Brooklyn Township. We were not contacted until it was already dug through our road and the culvert placed. Uh, we required them to remove that culvert. Uh, the contractors came back and swore at me and told me how stupid I was to take that culvert out. You know, but then after talking to him further, he said, "Well, he told the dairy to contact Brooklyn Township a month ago." So, I did respond to him, "Well, then that's the people you should be swearing at." March twentieth, twenty-twenty-three, Lincoln County zoning meeting, Tim Dindalk said that there should never be any trucks from Mincota Holdings hauling condensed, you know, anything to the condensed plant on Brooklyn Township roads. On April fourth of two thou, and fifth of twenty-twenty-three, uh, they hauled big steel silos across our township, and, I don't know if you can see that picture of that truck going across a bridge that was only authorized to have twenty-seven tons with a multi-axle truck. Uh, and like I say, this happened more than one time. Well, the road hall permits were being, uh, road hall weight limits were on at that time, so I'm, I'm pretty sure that's why they were on our township roads, so they weren't on the county highways. Uh, August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, joint meeting in Brooklyn Township, Tim Do, Tim Dindalk and five area farmers, along with Brooklyn Township, met with them about their upcoming silage, uh, cutting, and they were going to supply us with maps of where that was going to be. And at that time, we had talked to them about, you know, all the trucks that were speeding, all the dust problems, and not stopping at stop signs. And that was the case where Mr. Tom Erickson was killed just a few days later by one of the custom operators running a stop sign. October twenty-fourth through the twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three, calls from citizens about excessive manure and mud on the roads. Supervisor Dwayne Carlson talked to one of the tractor operators, and he told the operator, you know, that this was, was not acceptable, you know, all the large chunks of manure that were on the road. And he was told by that operator that, uh, he was told by the company to just drive over those chunks. That's some of the stuff that's on our roads.
What company are you referring to? Are you referring to Red Rock?
Calmet.
Okay.
That I believe is the ones that are handling that, you know? And the reason some of that's getting on our roads is because this is what it looks like in their fields, you know, when they apply this manure, they inject it, but then they get to the ends, they lift up the injector, and it just flows on top of the ground. They then pull out of the fields with all this equipment and cover our roads with what I showed you before. On March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four, on two-hundred-and-sixty-eighth, a custom manure applicator tractor ran into a, onto a bridge, you know? He left the scene of that and did not report the accident to Brooklyn Township or Lincoln County. Supervisor Dwayne Carlson called Lincoln County a couple of days later to find out if it had been reported and found out that it hadn't, and we don't know whether they paid for the damage to that bridge or not. November twenty, November third, twenty-twenty-four, uh, they installed an arch over one of our roads to pump this manure. And as you can see there, the arch, uh, this was not talked to with the supervisors or approved. Uh, the arch says that it's fourteen feet above the road, but it's down in the ditch, so it's probably closer to eleven, which is not, uh, acceptable to drive under with wagon loads of hay or a combine or anything else. But the biggest thing is, once again, they did not talk to the supervisors or have this approved. They just did it. Uh, March eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five, joint meeting with Lincoln County Courthouse, uh, Tim Dindalk, Brett Rosebloom, Delaware Township, Brooklyn Township, Toby Brown. I asked Tim Doak what chemicals they were using at the Red Rock Milk Condensing Plant. He said that they were approved chemicals, and, but then he said that he would not share what they were with me. And I asked him, "Are you kidding me? What do you mean? If they're approved chemicals, why won't you tell me what they are?" Well, it wasn't till later in the meeting that they did agree that they, they would share the information with us. But I did not get that information until the second zoning meeting about the permit here. I was handed a chemical list, but not telling me how much of this chemicals they're actually using. Having been a former dairyman, if I used a gallon of something that, you know, that would be one thing, but if these guys are using hundreds of gallons, and it's all in a concentrated area, that's a different story. So, I guess that's some of the history that's been going on between Brooklyn and these entities that are there that you've allowed to be there. We, we, you know, the forty-two-hundred-and-fifty first permit was one thing, but this has just expanded. I have asked before, you know, how much more expansion do they have planned? You know, do they have a cheese plant planned already? How many more dairies they wanted to build so they can supply their own facility with their own milk and not buy it from other outside entities? I think these are all questions that need to be answered before that you just allow these people to have another permit. You know, I think like Dwayne mentioned, that LTAP should do a road study, these are things that should have been done, but could still be done. There should be a third independent, third-party independent water study done, that should have been done to check the water before and now, and continuing to protect these people's wells and the road water system, being it's on an aquifer. Third should be a third-party independent air and odor study. You know, we get numerous complaints from residents about the odor that they're having to deal with. This will be three miles away. Third-party hydrology study, you know, where's all this runoff going that Dwayne is mentioning to you? Where will it be going? And of course, you know, we're talking here about the lights and, a light study and, and things like that also. I think the county needs to set some parameters, you know? In your conditional use permit, you talk about air, odor, all these things, or it's in the conditional use permit, but you don't have any parameters. I think you need to set some parameters so that these people can comply with them, and everyone knows that that's what they're going to be, and, and that would be fine then. But unless we have parameters to talk about these things and not have any, anything there to back it up, you know, I don't know where we're really at. So, in conclusion, I'd certainly like to thank you for your time. If you have any more questions for me, I'd sure be glad to try to answer them.
Hey, Steve, what township was that manure pipeline in?
That is in, uh, that is in Brooklyn Township.
That's your township, right?
Pardon? Well, they- No, what? Oh, yeah. They also, you know, on the same, on the same archway...
You can see the archway.
Just, yeah, one person at a time, so we know who's speaking.
The archways are in the back of the picture, and you can see that they, they put up a sign saying that they're shoulder work, which is improper signage.
Steve, that's your township, right?
Yep, yes, it is.
All right. Did they come to you and ask for permission to go over the road?
No.
All right.
We told them that, where they were not allowed to do that.
All right. Thank you.
All right. It's 8:20. We were, the 45 minutes was scheduled to be done at 8:18. We'll go another 10 minutes to 8:30 for the appellant's to present their testimony.
I thank you for your time. If you have any other questions for me, I'd certainly like to try to help give a little more detail on some of these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come and speak on behalf of repellents?
Good evening. My name's Ron Elbers. Address 27156, 471st Avenue. I'm the chairman of Deppert Township. I was on the planning and zoning board when this dairy started out here. And when I voted yes on it, I had no intentions that it was going to be anything like this. This is just completely overboard. A guy has to sit down and think and use your common sense. If the neighbors in the area don't want this to happen, it should not happen. This is not ag. It's commercial. And it's being put out in the middle of the country where you can't even use it. There's not enough roads to get everything to and from. There's issues there. Right now, there's, I mean, 75 trucks a day. I'm on a township by Sioux Falls, and we got roads there. We can't take care of them. Because they got semis, they got trucks. And it's possible, it is impossible to take care of them, keep them, to keep them in shape. And the only way we can keep that road is if the dairy would take and hard surface that road. Their dairy is being put up north, in northern part of the state, right now, three to five miles from interstate. The dairies are actually hard servicing them roads to the interstate to get them dairies in. They're a lot bigger than this one. When you put 14,000 cows in a small area, use common sense, man. It's just totally, utterly ridiculous. These neighbors, these guys around here, I know some of them, but you gotta realize what they're going through. How many, do you guys, anybody you guys live within three, four miles of that area? I mean, it's, it's not a good deal. And these people putting this stuff up should realize this too. If they don't, they're in the wrong business. They're in it for one thing, and one thing only, and that's to make money. They don't give a darn about the neighbors, about the land, or anything. What happens in 20, 30 years when they think those broke? Or they decide to up, it's all outdated, they just walk away from it, and who's gonna clean up the mess? Who's gonna clean it up? The county? Taxpayers? Look at the people living around there. I mean, it's maybe hard to say no to a facility that size, but that does not belong there. In my opinion, they're three times as big as they should be right now. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, we have questions for Terry. Thank you, Terry. Anyone else want to come up and speak on behalf of repellents?
Odell Overguard, 466-31289th Street. I live about a mile from the dairy. When we first started out, and it's been pointed out to us before, and I want to remind everybody again, the statement was, "We're going to put in this dairy. It's never going to be any larger than 5,000." Within two years, they added another dairy of 7,500 cattle. That's all we're gonna do. We're not gonna do any more. Then we added methane recovery system. Now we'd like to add a condensing plant. We're only going to do 14 trucks a day. It's capable of doing 50, but we're only gonna do 14. No more than that ever. And that was presented to you guys as a board. And I wrote, "Oh, we want to expand that to 75 trucks a day." I've been almost run off the road. I've almost been hit by milk trucks that didn't stop for stop sign. In comment to the police department, the sheriff's department, we called in for a wellness check for close friends. You know what we referred to us? The Bermuda Triangle of Lincoln County. We don't get there. That's the kind of treatment that we're being treated. What type of thing are they going to continue to modify and change? To me, it's definitely but a big scam. I think the board should turn them down and let us be an agricultural community, not a corporation factory.
Thank you. Anyone else want to come up and speak on behalf of the repellents?
Dana Knudsen, 46526291st Street, Delaware Township Supervisor. I guess my biggest concern is, of course, the extra traffic. When we had a, you know, it was just two years ago, when the condensing plant, their biggest selling point at that time, in the planning and zoning meeting at that time was, they're putting this up, we will have less traffic, because they're gonna be utilizing, taking the water out of the milk, reusing the water, the way I understand it, to clean, and, in their dairy operation. So, at that time, that was their biggest selling point, but it was gonna be less trucks. Part of the reason of putting that up, plus, I'm sure for financial gain. Well, now here we sit, two years later, and now it's gonna be 50, I've heard 50 or 75 trucks more. I guess my biggest concern is, what's it gonna be, if you do pass this, what's it gonna be a year or two from now? Is it gonna be another 100 trucks? Another 150 trucks? I don't know. Where's it gonna be the end? I guess that would be my concern for you people to clarify. We would like to know, you know, what is their end game? Is it, this has been added on to so many times throughout the years, and it continually grows, and our, can our infrastructure handle this? Township roads can't handle that kind of traffic, and the county roads can't either. So where's the tax dollars gonna come from to fix all these roads? And my other concern would be, I was, I live basically two miles from there, mile and a half. Born and raised there my whole life. So, the Viborg Road is the main road that they're using, which would be 291st Street. That has had frost laws, spring load limits on that road for as far as I can remember. In the spring of the year, you need to think about this. It's obviously a dairy. There's milk trucks. There's gonna be traffic coming seven days a week. Now, last year, I would like, I would ask you, who made this decision? Because that's the first time that I've seen from 466 to the interstate on 291st Street was not posted. Did that road just magically fix itself all of a sudden? And why is that road not posted for frost law load limits? But the two miles west of 466, which 466 is Highway 17, in my eyes, there's something going on there, kind of convenient, that all of a sudden, the Fairview Road is still posted, but all of a sudden, the Viborg Road is not posted from the interstate. I mean, that's where these roads are really gonna get tore up in the spring of the year, when the frost comes out, and now you're pulling the load limit signs on that road too. What's that gonna, how's that gonna work for all those taxpayers down the road? The, you know, more trucks, more traffic does not usually, you know, make for better roads down the roadway, and what that's gonna incur in cost. And I guess some of this, yep, the water quality, I'm concerned about as far as the chemicals that they're using in this plant. It'd just be nice to get some more information on that, to make sure the, the quality of the, and where that material is going, and how that's gonna help with the, with the water quality and the drainage off the, that facility. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, a closed testimony, and we'll move on to the applicant property owner, Red Rock Real Estate. And to be fair, you're three minutes short of one hour is what you got, so.
Okay. Appreciate that. Commissioners, good evening. Paul Casboth with A1 Development Solutions, based out of Sioux Falls, 101 South Phillips Avenue. Excuse me, I'm here to represent Red Rock. There's a lot to unpack. In, in the interest of everybody's time, I'm, I'll try to summarize and hit on, on some of the key points that we've talked about. First, I think it's, it's probably on the right that I start with, just talking about what does this facility do. There seems to be a lot of miscommunication and misinformation out there. The milk comes in, and I'll use an example of 100 pounds of milk, that, that comes into the plant. Right away, the cream is taken off of the milk. That's where that 13 pounds. That cream would be sold off to a plant that uses cream for things like butter, it could be sour cream, yogurt, those types of products. So what this plant is doing is separating the milk into its components. It's not manufacturing anything. So after you've taken out that 13 pounds, now it will go through, as it stands today, the RO system that we've talked about. That's what is there today. In the future, if this is approved, the UF line is added. Either way, at that point, no matter which system, it goes through 60 pounds of water out of this, 100 is removed. That water goes through an RO system. Again, to be further cleaned, that's sent back to the neighboring dairies to be used for water for the cows, cleaning, that sort of thing. Excuse me. That reduces the, the amount of water that has to be used out of the rural water system that they're hooked up to. So now we're down to 27 pounds that are left of the components. And for the RO that it goes through today, that's sold off as a toll, and that also would go to things such as yogurt, ice cream, those types of products. This is being sold to manufacturers that use these products in this fashion. When they take the milk in entirely in its own, that, that original 100 pounds, they have to do this fractionating to even begin the process that they go through. The value add here is that they're doing this for those facilities that they sell it to for manufacturing, and they're recycling the water and doing it. So now to touch on the UF that, that's being asked to be able to add, when the milk, the 20, whoops, excuse me, the 27 pounds that we talked about that's left, going through the UF, the difference is it removes the whey. That's about four pounds of the 27 that we're talking about. That whey now would go to those same dairies, the neighboring dairies, and be put into the food ration. The 23 pounds that remains is a product that goes into the higher protein type manufacturing systems, such as protein shakes that we're all familiar with, or making of cheese. So what the UF does is allows them to further fractionate the milk into its components and be able to sell those off to the manufacturers. This is not making condensed milk from a standpoint of what you buy in a can on a store shelf that's got products added to it and sugar added to it to extend shelf life, all those things. The condensed reference for this plant is it's taking out the, or the water of the milk, and then separating it into the components. So I hope that helps give a little bit more background as to what this really does. Again, no components are being added, no product is being made. The milk is being fractionated into these different pieces, or components. So what I would just add quickly on the economics involved, I think probably the, the main points that I would just touch on there. The original plant created 31 new jobs, and that's the employees live in the communities around this region. Ancestors of Sioux Falls, Harrisburg, Centerville, I believe, and even some in Brooklyn Township. The expansion is being proposed, would add five to seven new jobs, and that's about a $30 million investment. And when it's all said and done, what's as important as the jobs, I think, to just make a note of, all told, these families involved with everything we're talking about here that's been done, they'll be paying upwards of $500,000 in property taxes in Lincoln County when this is all said and done. So it's not like they're not also a property taxpayer. They also live here, live very close, live as close to the facilities, closer than anybody else does, and are large property taxpayers as well. Those property taxes, that's not to boast the number that they pay, but it's just a reminder that they're also contributing to the schools, and the roads, and the maintenance, and the infrastructure that everybody's property taxes go towards. So, to talk about the traffic, again, I'll try to kind of summarize these things, and then look forward to any questions. They're, they're talking about this expansion, what it allows with the extra volume of milk that this would allow to be able to go through the plant. That adds roughly 40 truckloads, probably a little less, but we say 40 trucks coming in that it could take of more milk, and then that would, that results in about 15 more trucks coming out. So 55 more trucks total in and out today if the expansion is approved than what's there. There was a traffic counter put up, as has been mentioned, that was done by the highway department, that, that was done totally on their own. What we've been told from the engineers involved that have started the traffic study, which I'll touch on some more, that Terry, the highway superintendent, said that the average daily count that we're getting was right at 1,200 vehicles. This is on 291st, so it'd be going between the interstate and, is that 466, I believe it is, that, that stretch of road. So...
Over what period of time?
My understanding, somebody mentioned that that was over about a week, that they had it up there. I honestly do not know how long they had it up. We, we weren't involved with that at all. We just know that it was up there. So, if, if that's the number that's coming from the highway superintendent that, that's been on there, we're talking less than 5%, that, that these trucks are adding to what's there today. That's a lot of numbers. It's a big number, but that's what the facts are saying. So, to just try to help put in perspective, all this extra traffic, it's a small increase in what's there. Now, all that said, as was agreed at PMZ, as was agreed when meeting with the highway superintendent, when PMZ approved this, we right away went and engaged an engineer that does traffic studies, and, and this was also in coordination with the highway superintendent, DGR Engineering out of Sioux Falls. They've started that process. That's what was agreed to. And the whole point there was to try to figure out, especially on 291st, are any improvements necessary from a safety perspective on the road for turning lanes? I mean, that really is the big question. Should there be turning lanes in and out of there with what there is for traffic today? That's underway, and the agreement that's been made, and it's in our condition on the permit, is if that study finds that something needs to be done, then that's what will be done, and it will be ran through the highway superintendent, approved by him, who reports to you guys, of course, and, and we're staying in close contact with him to, to do a weekend, excuse me again, to help coordinate the effort. But it's really Terry working with DGR to, to do the work. So, beyond that, just to talk about the roads. So in Delaware, I, I think that's pretty straightforward. The four miles road that, that all of these facilities use, so the dairies, and now also the plant, that's been taken care of by the dairies for years now. They take care of those roads 100%, those four miles. They don't get any reimbursement, as I understand it, from the township for what should be normal maintenance or anything else. They cover 100% of it, and they're fine doing it. And for anybody that's been out there, those roads are in good shape. They're well taken care of. The thing, I would remind everybody with the traffic with any of these facilities, good roads are as important to them as they are to anybody. They have to be able to get in and out of there every day. So, moving to Brooklyn Township, everybody has acknowledged the RO plant, the condensing plant, however we want to refer to it, has zero intentions of ever having a truck going up and down any of their roads that involve Red Rock, the facility we're talking about. Nobody can say it will never happen. Nobody ever says that, that new truck drivers don't show up and they take the wrong route. That can all happen. There's no controlling or avoiding that on a rare occasion. Their commitment is to do their best, to always tell everybody, as, as the sheriff mentioned earlier, they try... try to be proactive. They've asked for help making sure any of these contractors that are out there understand the rules, follow the rules, because this is no good for them when a contractor goes out and does something silly. It's no good for anybody. So is that an ongoing effort that has to happen all the time, especially when you're talking silage, uh, those things that come up on occasion? Everybody admits those are the toughest times. It was referenced earlier, that's when things are, are going hot and heavy, and everybody's got to do their part to manage it the best they can. They'd be the first to admit, it's not perfect. It's never been perfect. Nobody is saying there's never been mistakes made, but they want to work together. They want to be a good neighbor, because it's better for everybody than having to go through, everybody being at each other's throats. No, nobody wants that at the end of the day, no matter what might be, uh, what might be said. So, um, going to, um, a little bit more on the haul road agreement, Commissioner Aaron's, you'd, you'd asked about that. So two years ago, when we were doing this to try to get the approval for the plan, uh, we, we were talking, we, the group, the owners, myself, uh, trying to help, talking with Brooklyn Township, agreeing, let's get a haul road agreement in place. We provided to them a copy of what is, I would say, a standard practice. My company works with a lot of projects throughout the state, numerous counties. Really a standard approach, if, if you want to call it that, to, that, that can keep it simple, as, as we've seen anyway, and works really well. Have the agreement with the township, especially when it's the occasional use thing, feed. That's different from a road that's used all the time for the normal operation. Provide them with a map. Every time before you're gonna go out and do the work, let's say it's silage, in advance, these are the days we're planning to do it, these are the roads we're gonna use because we're coming out of these fields this year. That, that changes year to year. Then go out with the township, preferably both the, the owner and the township together, and just drive those roads and document the condition. What kind of shape is this in? And then have the agreement simply be, any damage, any cleanup, any grading that has to be done after the work's done, that's all on the facility. And that's what we had put in the haul road agreement draft that we sent. I think you have a letter from Mr. Swanson that, that said that, uh, that didn't work for the township because that'd be too burdensome to, to have to take the time to go meet with these guys, drive the roads and do the documenting. So that one, by the way, said, again, this going back two years ago, then they decided to take the approach of, I guess I'm gonna say unilaterally, adopt some, some zoning or new rules or licensing, whatever the term is that they use. That ended up getting litigated. That went through the courts. I think you guys are all aware of all, all of that background. And, and so after that, it kind of just died out. There was no more talk haul road agreements that I'm aware of, other than just the one that we had sent was rejected with that type of structure. They're happy to pay anything above the normal maintenance. That's, that's really just the standard approach. So now, as was mentioned, um, I think it was the end of May, Mr. Swanson sent them a, a new draft agreement, uh, that, that they wanted to pursue in their own language, and I'd have to ask Seth to come up here, because this was, I know, between him and Mr. Swanson. There were attempts, as I understand it, Seth will, will correct me, uh, reaching out saying, hey, we'd like to talk about this. The owners of the facilities never said, we won't touch this haul road agreement. The big question in there was the offer, as Mr. Swanson had, had mentioned, you're just gonna arbit- arbitrarily blanket whatever you'd want to say, pay a certain percentage of what the total maintenance is. And I think that's kind of where we were going with some of the discussion earlier. Well, obviously, I'm sure you understand, that could get really hairy in, in a hurry if you're talking the entire township, and you might use 15 or 20% of those roads in a given year over a total of 20 days, let's say. I think, I think the number was 22 days that they had vehicles operating last, in 2024 in Brooklyn Township, to give you an idea. These are the trucks that were supposed to be there, that were intended, what was going on, silage, uh, that sort of work. So the whole question was, I mean, that was a blank in the haul road agreement, blank percentage. That's what they wanted to discuss. The haul road agreement, nobody said was otherwise totally unreasonable. I don't think they're that far apart. Seth tried to reach out a couple of times, trying to get a meeting together, and that was right after May. I don't know the dates. He'd have to share that. Didn't get a response, again, this is my understanding. Um, and then when he did get one, as Mr. Swanson mentioned, weeks later, that was when this had already started, and now there was requests for audits of all the permits, and we're into the appeals, and we're into this fight. And I believe that's when they said, well, we just as well see this through now. But they would still love to get together and get something signed. They're just asking that it be fair. And I, I would say, when the accusations are out there, that, you know, somehow they just don't care, and, and they're not willing to help, and they're not willing to cooperate. I would just remind you again, they, they take care entirely of four miles of Township Road in Delaware, and they haven't complained, and they do it year after year. And they're not asking for anything in return. So everybody wants to cooperate, but that, that also takes everybody involved on both sides to choose to cooperate as well. So hopefully we can get there. Uh, I don't know what will happen with, uh, the condition, uh, that the chair brought up as far as a concern. The goal is getting an agreement in place and, and just have it be fair. And maybe a percentage works. It's just, they need to be able to sit down together and say, what's an actual fair percentage if you're talking the entire township's budget for roads that are used on occasion?
Were the talks facilitated by a mediator?
I don't believe so, no. I mean, they had a meeting with Toby this spring, but this didn't come up in that.
But I'm talking like a mediator, like that's what they do.
Right, no.
No, okay.
Paul.
Seth, you got anything, Deb?
Paul, I'll ask him a question. Madam Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
Paul, thank you for being here. Just a couple, uh, questions about your comments. I, I, I'll wait till Seth gets up there to ask some of those things. Uh, you said $30 million investment. That's good. That's just for this new facility.
The expansion, correct.
Okay. And then you said you guys pay $500,000 in property taxes?
They're expecting that with everything that they've invested in Lincoln, there will be 500 now. I, yes.
So just, I mean, that's not the new facility. That's the collective.
Correct.
That's out there.
Correct.
Okay. And then just a question about that traffic count, and it's too bad we didn't have a report from Terry or whatever, but is that 1,200 a day or 1,200 a week?
Average per day. Average daily traffic on the road. So that'd be trucks, cars, pickups, everything.
Yeah. So, and, and I, this is gonna be a little bit of a swag, but have you ever heard, kind of what I've heard since my six years on the commission here, is anytime you get, and is that a paved road or is that a gravel road?
That's the 291st, the paved road, the primary road.
All right. I got it. Thank you. Um, and then the turning lane issue, you guys are good on that? You're gonna do that?
If, if, well, it's based on whatever the traffic study comes up with. Yeah. Is it warranted or isn't it?
Right. So if the traffic study says yay, you're okay. If it says nay, yeah.
Absolutely. That commitment is.
Um, and then, yeah, and I mean, I just, I'm trying to figure out where the parties are, you know? We know, we know where the township is, right? That they want this. I don't quite know where you guys are yet. You kind of flushed it out. I'll wait till Seth gets up here. I want to get you to hear though.
Amen.
Um, but, um, and I'd like to do that tonight. But, um, I guess I'll wait and hear from, from Seth.
Sure. You got here?
Question?
Go ahead.
Paul, um, you mentioned, we heard from, that they were talking about 75 trucks per day, and you indicated that, um, there would be 55 more trucks. I mean, um, numbers, uh, 40 if I've got in and 15 out or something like that? What?
Added with the expansion.
Added with the expansion.
Correct. So, so the total, if you take today.
Yeah.
And add the expansion, it'd be right in that 70, 75.
Okay.
I think that's where that number comes from that is, I'm sure, been shared before.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Oh, Paul, one other, one other question. So you said what, one of your offers was, um, you were gonna give a map of the roads that are being used to Brooklyn Township?
Yes.
Um, is that currently being done right now, or that was what you proposed as part of?
That's what was proposed. That, that we would consider being a, a standard practice, uh, in, in a, in a lot of other projects. Given, heads up, it's gonna be these roads. Let's document the condition, pictures, the whole works. The, the owner themselves can do that. The preference is you do it with the township, so everybody's seeing the same thing.
So I get the fact Township wants X percentage of all their roads or whatever. What is your, what percentage of the roads do y'all think you use?
I believe when, uh, so Brett was looking at this. Brett Rosenbaum, COO for Red Rock, uh, can also help answer some questions. When he was looking, I think last year, all told, it was 11 miles of Brooklyn Township Road that they used for these, the occasional, the feed, um, hauling primarily is what that is, uh, the silage and some halage, and the occasions they do it. So, um, yeah, and that was 22 days, 11 miles was his best estimate he could come up with when he looked back at what fields did they get feed out of last year.
Uh, that pipeline arch. Um, you know, Lincoln County doesn't take too kindly to pipelines.
Yes, sir. I do know that.
You may, you may have maybe read some news stories about that. Um, what's the deal with that thing?
So that was their attempt when, you know, as, as was mentioned, I, I can't remember unfortunately who shared it. They had put in, as I understand it, a culvert. And then it sounds like they didn't talk to the right people, didn't get the right permission. That, that, that's on them if that's the case. But what a lot of facilities do, working with townships when they're cooperating, they do put in their own culvert or pipe, and then that's used to run drag lines through. Instead of using the culvert that's there in existing, they'll just put in their own that's dedicated to it, so that when they do have a, a drag line in there for a few days, they don't have to worry about big rain coming through and that, that culvert is plugged.
Did, did, did your entity ask the township for permission to do that?
I was not involved. I do not know if they had discussions on that or not. I, I cannot say if they did or not.
Okay. So if you would've went through the culvert and you'd go through the roads, you'd need to get a utility permit from the Highway Department, right?
Yes.
Which we do. Okay, you got a utility.
Again, I, just for the record, it's one at a time, and I gotta know who's speaking.
And, and I, I can answer that too. I mean, unless Brett's just dying to get up or...
No, I get it, I get it. I could see it, I suppose.
As I understand it, uh, that's submitted to Toby, uh, through the P&amp;Z office.
Okay.
So the same concept that was being proposed with the township is you, you get a permit. You get the approval in advance to, to run them.
And if you know, Seth, maybe you know, when you get a utility permit, obvious, obviously that's, utilities are a common carrier. Your manure pipeline is not a common carrier because you don't offer the business to anybody outside of your entity, right?
Correct.
So my concern is, is that you're requesting a permit from the county through the auspices of using a common carrier utility permit, but your pipeline is not a common carrier. And I didn't know if you were aware of that or not.
I guess I'd, I'd have to defer to Toby on the process.
Okay.
Uh, there, I know, I, I don't know what it's called or considered, but I know in most counties, there's...
It's not a gotcha game. I'm just trying to figure out who, who applied for what and where, and where permission comes, and whether the township allowed it or...
Yeah, and at, and at the end of the day too, um, I mean, the drag lines, I think most people recognize, that is the preferred way to move the manure, because otherwise you're talking a whole lot of trucks have to be on the road. The facilities have no choice but to move it. There, there is no choice. So the drag lines are preferred, my understanding, when, when that pipe was bought, they thought they were doing the right thing because they weren't allowed to go under the road. They were told they had to remove what they had put in, so they said, well, we'll go over. That's not cheap to rent those and to have to do that. I'm not suggesting that doesn't mean they shouldn't have permission or notified or anything else. I'm just saying that's why, why it was done.
Do they now go under? Do they now go through the culvert?
I will need Brett on that one.
You mean the whole introduction?
Yeah, can you just introduce yourself?
All right. Brett Rosenbaum, 3504 East High Plains Circle, Sioux Falls. Uh, we, so we submit annually, uh, the permit with, uh, Terry Fluid, actually the Highway Superintendent.
Right.
And on those permits, we've always stated what we're using it for, which is manure pipelines. They've approved it every year.
Yeah.
And, uh, our preferred method is to just go through the culverts, because they're there. It's, it's easier to go through. Uh, we were requested or told that we cannot go through the culverts in Brooklyn Township, and then I believe our manure, our contractor for the manure pumping, uh, purchased or rented that, that over the road to use.
Who told you you couldn't go through the culvert?
The township.
Okay. All right. So they said no permission, and then you guys did it anyway?
Uh, I mean, we didn't go through the culvert. They said, don't go through the culvert. So we tried to avoid going through the culvert. We tried to run a lot of manure pipeline on, on, uh, field, private property, the, the best we can.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out ways to create more cooperation and less division.
Okay.
Thank you.
You, it'd be all right if we have Seth come up and talk a little bit on that.
It's your time for testimony, so you can have whoever testify that you'd like.
Hello, Seth Lapore, Council for Red Rock Real Estate LLC. Um, Commissioner Aaron's, you had asked kind of what the timeline was as far as requesting the meeting. Um, I looked through my emails while I was sitting there. I believe I made five requests of AJ to have that meeting, to set up some discussion, to facilitate this, and I was ignored until basically a day before the hearing. And I think that was the same day that they filed a petition for review on all, um, conditional use permits that Makota Holdings has and Red Rock Real Estate has.
A day before the P&amp;Z hearing?
Correct.
Okay.
So it's a pretty clear indication, there was no intent to cooperate. There was no intent to have a discussion about the road haul agreement. Um, I'd also like to just point out, uh, for the commission, because there's been a lot of testimony today about silage trucks and issues with the KFOs and the dairy. The issue before the commission today is the appeal of the condensing plant. This is not an appeal of the dairy. This is not an appeal of the KFO. It's a very narrow question before the commission today. Um, we heard a lot of testimony about silage trucks. I believe I remember one deputy say, deputy saying that the milk truck drivers are very nice. They drive slowly. That's gotten lost in the testimony, uh, tonight. Uh, and I think that's very important. Uh, in addition, the, uh, conditions three and four on the approved CUP says that no dairy trucks are gonna potentially go into Brooklyn Township. And then four says, to the extent they do, or in addition, we have to come to an agreement on a road haul agreement. Well, as, I mean, Paul did a great job outlining kind of the percentage of use of Brooklyn Township roads. Um, but certainly there's a huge concern that if we're just talking about number of trucks in, number of trucks out in 2013 compared to today, well, that's the entire township. That's not representative of what's actually being used or actually being expended. Um, the other issue I'd like to talk to you a little bit about is this idea that they're creating condensed milk. And for some reason, the federal transportation laws somehow preempt this body's authority to zone its own land. It's just simply not true. Um, those, those regulations are intended to track and regulate interstate commerce. This body's function, one of its main functions is to zone the land within this county. We're, we're talking about apples and oranges here. It's just not the same. It's not condensed milk, and those provisions have no application here. The sole guiding factor is what the regs say, and the fact remains that the original conditional use permit, when the condensing plant was created, was zoned A1. Nothing has changed. It's still A1. Uh, I believe Toby said at the P&amp;Z, uh, hearing that it's A1, all surrounding land is A1. He said it again tonight. Uh, nothing has changed. This is an expansion of a previously approved and upheld CUP. The, the nature of the land hasn't changed. Uh, they want to really focus on the process that's being used at this facility to somehow transform it out of A1. Um, but that's just not reasonable, and it's not consistent with what the zoning regs say. So with that, I would ask the, the commission to uphold the CUP, but I am available for any questions, and we do have Brett, obviously, and Paul, if you need anything else.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
So Seth, you got a message on June 15th. That was the day before the P&amp;Z hearing. Hey, we want to sit down and talk, right?
Uh, not, no, that's not correct. Uh, not, no, that's not correct.
What did it say?
It said, due to scheduling, we, we're not going to be able to meet with you.
Okay. Well, I heard AJ tonight say that he sent some correspondence, say he wanted to sit down and talk to you. You're saying you never got that?
That did happen, but that was, that was after I made five requests.
When?
I, I don't have the email in front of me, I have the emails that I sent to him. This was June 5th, 6th, 9th, and 13th.
Here's why I'm so insistent about this. I chewed their butts last time that we, that you all were in front of us for refusing to sit down and talk. Now, I'm hearing from AJ, he offered to sit down and talk. I want, I would like to know why you didn't, like, why didn't you call him back three days ago or five days ago? He said that you sent a letter of some kind saying, well, because this appeal is pending, we're not going to talk to you. I mean, you know, in court cases, I get this all the time, when court cases are going on, judges are like, you still need to talk, you still need to talk. I want to know why y'all didn't just sit down and talk, but I don't know if I'm even going to get an explanation from that, so I'll move on. So the next thing I want to ask is, yes, sir?
Can I respond to that?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Aaron's. One of the conditions of the permit that was approved is that we sit down together with the commissioners to discuss. And so, you know, we tried to reach out to them a number of times ahead of the Planning and Zoning Commission approval of the, the permit, that was then through it, and then finally after that, they said, well, let's meet. And then, again, there were a number of different things that they filed against us, so we decided, while that condition is in there, let's just meet, sit down with everyone and discuss it.
But that's only if the permit is approved. You, you don't need our permission to sit down and negotiate with them. And the reason I know that is because you all have previously sat down and negotiated with them. Right? So, I mean, I think I've made my point. Y'all could've just sat down a week ago, nobody was stopping you. Right?
Yes.
Exactly. And I think that's what we want in Lincoln County, is we want people to just sit down and talk to each other to resolve this before it comes to us. But now it's in front of us. So my next question is, what is your position on the road hall agreement? What are you offering? And the reason I ask is because I'll make a motion tonight saying I want inclusion of a provision that says this is what it's going to be. So I want to find out what they can tolerate, I want to find out what you can tolerate, maybe we can even puppy dogs and rainbows, we all get together, maybe we can have an agreement on the record here. Tell me what your position is.
I guess our, our position would be that we sit down with them pre-harvest, we go over the roads, we, we review all the roads that we impact for that year or for that harvest period. Once we're done, we go through them again, we will pay for and all the repairs and maintenance related to the damage that was caused related to the, to the roads that we are driving on.
What if y'all disagree? Let me ask you this, because I asked him the same thing. I'd ask him the same thing. Y'all are going to be tied up in court or who knows what. Because who's the referee of that? Right?
I mean, I, I don't disagree with you, but, I mean...
So I want to create some kind of provision in the conditional use permit tonight where, you know, there's just a dollar amount, you're going to send it over to them?
I mean, respectfully, I guess I question like, the permit that we're here discussing now doesn't touch those roads. So why would we have, there could be a condition on a permit that doesn't touch those roads?
Well...
I, I'm not, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, I'm just asking the question.
Good question. And I'll, I want to point to this ordinance.
I'm gonna, can we, can you guys finish your testimony? Because we'll have time for questions.
Yeah, I want to ask the next question here though.
All right.
You know, got a lot of letters here talking about your economic support to the community, but there's not one single letter saying that there's economic support going to the township. Are you all willing? You, you heard what they said about the baseline used to be, 100, uh, used to be, they basically said, as a result of the dairy, they use 140 more loads of gravel than what they used to. Do y'all, do you concede that? Do you agree with that number?
I mean, I have no records of what they did. I, I have no idea if that's accurate or not.
Right. And if it was accurate, I mean, would you have any objection to just reimburse them for 140 loads of gravel and be done with this thing?
I mean, I guess that's why we would like it to be tied to the road that we use, because there's, was it 36 square miles in a township? If we only use 10, why would we agree to pay for the other 30 or 25?
I know, and that's what I'm trying to figure out here, I, which I wish y'all would've sat down and talked and then maybe said, okay, it's not actually 140, it's like 50 or, you know what I mean?
Okay.
All right. I'm going to get us back on track with the appeal on the CUP.
I do?
Sure do.
If anybody, if you have any other, you've got about 22 minutes left.
So, thank you for that, and I, I will try to cruise along here, because I know there's other folks that, that have things they want to say too. So, that being said, noise was talked about. We do not want to try to get into a back and forth with anybody about their readings. These guys took their readings, so I'll just share that with you, not going to try to refute anybody else's. I do have the documents here of the readings these guys took at the plant. We didn't send this around, happy to if, if you'd like to see them, I'm just going to try to summarize it. They went in the plant, this was Brett that did it, while the processing is going on, and the reading was 92. That's in the plant, ground zero, full operations, standing right there. Then he went outside the facility, and I'll just, I'll just summarize these, I guess. Outside the facility in three different locations, north of the plant, so just outside the walls, north of the plant, west, south, and those range from 45.8 to 59.6 on decibels. And then the last reading, he went down right to 291st on the fourth, on the north side of the road and got a reading of 47. So, that's the readings they got using the decibel meters. But what I would point out beyond that, instead of just trying to get into a debate of decibels and all those things, a couple of things that I think are important to note, you, you have a letter from, I believe it was June 19th, from Mr. Swanson. After the first letter, they came out referencing all the noise and Mrs. Eric's, Ms. Eric's screenshots that she had shared. On the 19th, there's a letter now that comes out that says, it must've been the Dendolks put out a noise recorder, I believe was what it was referenced as, out about 50 feet from Ms. Eric's mailbox. They didn't know anything about it. And then there was also comments referencing the letter that she said, what a coincidence, or it was said, can't really be a coincidence that all of a sudden the plant, the whole operation is quieter. And for the first time in years, it was peaceful at her house. That noise recorder that they were accused of putting out in that letter was the traffic counter that was put out by the highway superintendent. There was no noise recorder, there was no decibel readings going on. The plants, the dairies, everything that's there ran the exact same way those days as it had every day. And they can't control the noise up or down from day to day. So, you can take that for what it's worth, but you have that letter in front of you. And then I would also just mention there are all other letters that I'm, I'm sure you've seen in support, but primarily I would say just focusing on the other neighbors in the area that did write letters of support, and especially the one that would be the neighbor to the northeast that lives closer than any other neighbor other than Tim Dendelke himself and his family. That said in their letter, them and their three daughters enjoy outside frequently, they're out on their deck, they've had no problems with these facilities, they get to enjoy their peaceful life, and, and they support these. So, again, I just want to make sure that that is also noted when we're hearing the exact opposite as well. So, with that, I guess I would just wrap up on the, the water side. The chemical lists have been provided. Those lists are provided through FDA and, and Dana, through all the permits. The facility is permitted, very heavily regulated, anything that's used is all food grade, it's the same types that would be used for cleaning sallos at the dairies. And just to make sure it's clear, the water and anything from this plant that is returned to the dairy lagoons, that is all monitored, regulated, tested, overseen by Dana, both on the dairy permits and the, the Red Rock facility permits. But as milk inspectors, I think it's twice a month for number eight that they're coming through there and inspecting, so highly regulated, these are the chemicals that they're told to use. And where they go, how they're managed, how they're handled, is all very heavily regulated and controlled and approved. So, I guess I'll stop there. Again, I know there's a lot of other people, we're going to, we're running out of time here. And I would just conclude with saying, I hope, at least to some extent, it's come across that these folks have also tried to cooperate and they have tried to be a good neighbor. It's easy to say, they're, they're big, they're the big money, they don't care about anybody, but that's not what they've shown over the years. If they're at an impasse with somebody and can't come to a conclusion, I couldn't agree with you more, Commissioner. Everybody would like to have this done, have a hall road agreement, they've offered up, they've said we'll gladly pay anything above normal maintenance, that, that we can actually have attributed to us. And, and so, you know, a road is damaged when they use it, all those things like, like we've talked about. If we can come to that agreement, I think everybody would be more than happy to do that if anybody else is willing to. It's been offered. So, I'll stop there. Allow other folks to have a chance to come up, happy to come up for any other questions that I might be able to help with.
All right, we've got 17 minutes of testimony left for the applicant.
Commissioner Aaron's, you've asked what we're willing to do. Tonight, you can put it on the record, we will, we agree to write a $25,000 check to both Brooklyn and Delaware Township on an annual basis.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else for the applicant? That would be proponents of the project or otherwise?
Paul Garbers, 1016 Angel Lane in Canton, South Dakota. Yes, I am a fuel all of two of the dairy, but I'm also a fuel all of two about 200 other customers. Just a little bit, I agree that we've gotten way off talking about roads when we're talking about a permit. Me being on the city commission, I know where we're at. Talking to you because I'm in your seat, you have your own, it's in front of you, just follow them. Let me give you a little bit about fuel. When I deliver fuel to farmers, they pay zero sales tax. When I deliver fuel to a construction outfit, they pay 4.2% sales tax, anything that's not ag. When we, when I bring them clear diesel, for every gallon of diesel that goes on the semi, .548 cents per gallon is sent to either the federal government or to the state government. And yes, I know, we're talking county and township, but we also, in the city, we get money from the federal government and the state. So, strictly talking sales tax, all road tax, it's a two advantage of every, every one of us to use a licensed vehicle simply because of the 54 and a half, 54.8 cents per gallon of tax that automatically gets sent. I have to pay that when I get it, I pass it on when I deliver it. We all stood up tonight when we heard about two lives getting saved. We were all one big group. Two hours later, we're separated. What makes sense in life?
Thank you, Paul.
Anyone else on behalf of the applicant, probably on? All right, then I will close testimony. It's 9:13. I'm going to... Well, let me see, show of hands, would anybody like a short break on the commission? Anybody need a break? Okay, then we'll keep going. I will give the appellant's a total of 10 minutes for rebuttal.
That's cumulatively. Thank you.
Thank you for defining. Bethany Eric, 46747, 291st Street, Centerville. I'd like to address the noise levels and the fact that there were certain days where they were lower. I caught the majority of the days, which are the highest ones. I'd like to know exactly what date they were checking noise, but that's, that's pretty down in the, in the weeds for where we need to be tonight. Bottom line is, I would like you to consider the fact that you can see that it's an egregious affront to all of us that are living in that area to approve this tonight. And I would hope that you would look to us and see our plight and understand that the best advantage that we could provide for the residents of our communities and townships is to go ahead and get this moved to a major arterial road or municipality. That's what I would wish for, is we, it's not that we don't want it built, but it's not the right place. It reminds me of the prison fight. Right thing, wrong place. So, with that, I would just beg of you to consider what we've already endured, what we're up against, and consider that perhaps another location would be better suited. Any questions for me?
Any questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, I'm not the one that came up with the term condensed milk. That comes strictly from the applicant itself calling it that. And if it's something other than that, that's fine, but I'm, I'm using their terminology and how the commodity is called and referenced in no end of industrial reference books. I think it's a product that is no longer a farm product and it no longer fits within the ag zone as a conditional use. It's true, we did have correspondence, communications back and forth about the, the scope of this road hall agreement that I had sent to lawyer Lepore. His email inquiries about having a meeting became fairly intense just before the planning commission meeting. And unfortunately, I had two out of town trips at that same time, it just was not possible to get together. I did propose recently to get back together and talk about it, and he's the one that, that pulled the plug on those discussions, so. I'm hopeful we can get together and talk and come to an agreement. The, the prior agreement that they had proposed is simply unworkable. And that is because it required, first of all, a course of study with the applicant and the township photographing or documenting the condition of the roads, both before the use and after the use. Well, the use occurs multiple times per year, so there are going to be multiple investigations or surveys taken of the road. Then, after the use ends, which again happens multiple times in a season, the road has to be resuraveled, and then if the township thought that repairs were necessary, we had to obtain an estimate of the cost of repairs, yet their approval of what that cost would be was simply unworkable. These three supervisors for Brooklyn Township have their own farms and lives to lead rather than serving as adjunct road inspectors for the benefit of the applicant. Beyond that, I simply stand on, on what I've already said as far as Brooklyn and Delaware Township is concerned, and if you had other questions, Commissioner Aaron's, I'd be happy to respond. Thank you.
Thank you. Got four minutes left for appellate testimony.
I guess I'd like to address the, you know, the number of trucks they're talking about there. When you're talking about a semi load compared to a car, I think you need to talk with LTAP about that. I believe they've told me that one semi legally loaded would be similar to 1,000 cars. When these people are cutting silage, it's not just silage, which is four cuttings of hay or five, one or two cuttings of rye lage, and lots of acres of corn silage, but they are also hauling manure on roads also. And that would be with semis and tankers. So to try to say that there isn't much damage because of the count number there, it's way different than a car going by. It's a huge difference. As far as the manure lines, who, you know, when they originally came in, they just started placing those in our road ditches without any permission to do that either and damage on our shoulders. So as far as Brooklyn Township, we have passed an ordinance that they cannot be in our ditches anymore. They can bore under the roads and put in their chases if they would like, but we do not want them in the public right of way because the ordinance says there also state that they shouldn't be in it. Our other legal counsel from South Dakota Association of Towns and Townships told us do not let them be in your right of ways. And one of the biggest reasons why we didn't want them in our right of ways, and I'm very concerned for the county on that also, is whose legal liability will it be if there's a huge spill? Somebody goes off the road and gets killed on one of those lines? We have tried getting the dairies and any of these entities to include us on their insurance as another payee or a bond. We've asked them and they said they have, but they've never shown us that we are. So there, once again, it seems like we have trouble, you know, coming together on something like that. But, but anyway, there's a huge difference on a semi and a car. You really need to have a study done and have the authorities tell you how many, how many semis that would be like of a car going by, so, thank you.
Steve, what does a load of gravel cost you?
Yeah, I wanna know.
What's a co?
About 300 bucks. I thought I had, I thought I had a load of gravel haul, and it was 300 dollars.
You've been doing this township thing for so long, and you host that annual township conference, and we all go there, and I appreciate what you do. But what does a load of gravel cost?
2024, the load of gravel for 20 tons was $264.80. It's gone up a little bit, I can look more if you want me to give you the 2025 number.
So if I take 264 times 100?
264, 264.80.
Yeah.
Times 100.
Make sure we got the right number.
Yeah, whatever.
You can do 265.
Yeah, what, too late. You take that times 140, you get 36,960. You guys wanted 140, they wanted, they offered 25K.
That's 100 loads.
You're in the ballpark, right?
Well, when they're saying that, well, they don't want to pay for the gravel on all the townships.
Well, I mean, they don't drive on all.
Right now, right now, the expense per year from what it had been is, is.
They don't drive on all the township roads, do they?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Nope.
But that's still, Commissioner Erns, to your point, that's 100 loads of gravel. That's a lot of gravel.
All right, I'm gonna close testimony.
For 10 miles.
However, commission discussion will open. Commission may ask any person to provide additional testimony.
Does Toby have anything to talk about?
I do have a question for Toby.
Question, Toby.
I'm in a cheap seat, sorry.
Toby, have you kept, do you have a number on the number of complaints about these issues that we're hearing about tonight that you've had, say, in the last, whatever timeframe you can pinpoint, whether it's a year or five years or 10 years?
So I wasn't around in 2013, but since 2013 and the records that, that we've searched, that my best guess is that there's been three formal written complaints against the properties.
Are there any pending?
Uh, no, all three of those were dismissed.
How many phone call complaints?
Uh, we don't track those, as I mentioned, I think through the testimony, through phone calls, there's, there's concern about the silage trucks and the safety of the silage trucks.
More than 20?
No, not more than 20, no.
And the silage trucks are going to the other properties?
Correct. So the silage trucks are going to the other property, so. And again, you know, I'll clarify that, Commissioner Erns, is that we don't track the phone calls. The county policy is that we don't investigate complaints unless there's a filed written complaint in accordance with the application that's on our website. So I can't speak for, you know, I'm sure Seth knows, I'm answering the phone call about every time, but I can't speak from 2013 how many phone calls we've had. Yes, during the harvest times, it's excessive, but it's not just in that area, it's throughout the entire county during that process.
Yeah. Thank you, Toby.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Other commission discussion, or anybody have questions for anybody?
I, you know, I, I've sat here and listened to a considerable amount, but is there not no benefit that, I looked around and I've talked to Walt Bones at Bones Dairy, and he's been doing this for, I don't know how many years, and he's pumped more nutrients, I think the good word is, around Turner County than anything, and they haven't had the same issues. And he went over to, you go across the border or over south of Inwood, and I've, I've listened to some of those farmers talk about the fact that there's been a tremendous economic boon to that farmer who plants his corn or whatever alfalfa, and that's it. I haven't heard anybody talk about the benefit that has been there. I understand all of this. I will also say, I have driven on every mile of your township. Jim Gibbon and I made a special effort to go down and drive on all 36 miles to see what it was like. And yes, I've been down there when it's hauling silage down there. And I understand some of the concerns you have because they come. And they're, they're, as, as our sheriff has said, they may not be breaking the law, but I mean, it is a situation that would be of concern. I understand that. And I also understand, you know, that there is a resistance to bigness and coming from where you were one time in a farm situation, but things have changed a lot. So it's not without understanding that we're not pushing this aside or trying to say this. But right now, tonight, we're trying as a commission, we have in front of us a conditional use permit to expand a facility to increase the volume of material that they want. That's what we have in front of us, that's all. And we have a comp plan that says it fits within that comp plan. So if I am a commissioner and I say this is what I have in front of me, that is what I have to vote on. I don't vote on anything, I'm not voting on that one dairy A or dairy B, I'm not voting on that. I'm only voting on this facility. So please understand that. You know, we can drag in 100 of different things. Commissioner Erns wants to get, and you know, it's high time, Paul, it's high time that we lower the rhetoric and try to work together. I think you will be much further ahead if you try to compromise, bury some of this animosity that exists and all the other kinds of things, and learn to work together because the township may benefit in the long run. And I, I honestly believe that. And that was one of the things I was thinking of when I was driving down here tonight. My gosh, let's, let's, we got so much division in our country today, can't we learn to get along? And if the dairy says that they're willing to write you a check for 25,000 bucks, that's 100 loads of gravel. That's one heck of a lot of gravel. I don't care where you count it. I live, I got a farm right on a township road, Perry Township. I look at that, and when Lewis and Clark came in, we had, we had township roads all beat to it, but we got it all settled. So I'm just putting my situation is, and I don't know if somebody's gonna make her, I'm in favor of granting, or turning down this appeal and letting them get on with their life. That's just my situation.
Paul, would you put up that overhead that I asked you to do? Because, you know, we are, well, he's, yeah, that's, I need him to put that up, yes. Because Commissioner Schmidt, what you said is absolutely right. We have to go back and we have to only vote, we can't, we can't go to other dairies, we can't go to other CUPs, we can't do anything except for what is before us. And to me, hearing all of this with especially the travel and the roads, Toby, I think I'm, I'm ready for you too. Because we have to keep an open mind, we have to listen to you, which we have. And so I really believe that there is an amendment that we can add to this. Can I make that now, or what do you want me to do?
Anybody that would like to make a motion can make a motion. The motions that need to be made are either to uphold the decision of the planning commission, to overrule the decision of the planning commission, or to amend. So if you're gonna do an amendment, it would be a motion to amend.
And that's what I'm going to do. Toby, do you have that to put up? Oh, yes.
We're adding it up there right now.
Yes, that is. So I'm motioning to amend the planning and zoning approval by adding two additional conditions, and they're at the bottom, because I think the biggest concern that we have here for this meeting is the, the road conditions, whether it's the road haul agreements or, you know, what. We are just asking that the raw milk tankers associated with the agriculturally related operation of the milk condensing plant shall, in best practice, traverse interstate, federal, state, and county roads excluding 468th Avenue between 290th Street and 291st Street, and 290th Street between 467th Avenue and 469th Avenue, Delaware Township. The exception is any raw milk tankers that may originate in another township. And then the last one is county planning staff shall facilitate an annual neighborhood meeting to include the applicant, the District Two Commissioner, which is me at the moment, and the Sheriff's Department. Because we as a county want to be part of the solution, not a part of the problem. And Toby, were you gonna put up that map of where those roads were? If I can ask you to do that?
So essentially, the township roads in Delaware Township, this is Brooklyn Township, would be to the south. Delaware Township is where these facilities are located. It would essentially be the township roads leading to those facilities. As was mentioned testimony, the dairy does maintain those four township roads as it is. But essentially, what that condition does is it says stay off the township roads except for these township roads, stay on the county, federal, or state roads.
Thank you. So that's my motion.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. Just for discussion on the motion, I, I understand what's trying to happen with paragraph four, and I love being part of a solution, but a special meeting with county, five county board of commissioners, I don't know if that's the best mediation situation.
Madam Chair.
I think that the party should agree on a mediator, go to mediation, we can't force anybody to make an agreement. But obviously, I mean, if we're sitting up here and we're making decisions and nobody's gonna like them, I mean, you have control, if you're in a mediation, to agree to what you want to agree with and go as far as you want to go. So.
But Madam Chair, I think if we pass the motion that we just, that I just put forward, they won't be going through Brooklyn Township, so there's no reason for number four.
So that would come out entirely?
That's not the way I read your, that's not the way I read it.
That wasn't the way, you know, Commissioner Erns, you were gonna say something.
Well, okay, so a couple different things here. After we deal with Commissioner Otten's amendment, I was gonna make an amendment to get rid of number four, the one you had concerns about.
Well, if you guys will just make that part of your motion.
Well, I will, but I'm, you know, Commissioner Otten wanted to follow the, when she came on, she wanted to follow parliamentary procedure, and out of respect, I'm doing that now, but I was gonna get rid of number four, and then what I was gonna say is, they conceded to pay both of the townships 25 grand a year, I was gonna make that part of the motion.
I love that.
And, and adopters.
We can add that.
Do you want to withdraw your original motion?
But I'm just saying, I didn't read your.
Okay.
Thing the way that you did.
Okay.
So.
And I worked with, I was Toby on that, so.
Yeah, we, I mean, what?
There's no reason that we can't vote on this and then make yours a second. I mean, another condition.
Do, do you want to revise this to basically say something to the extent of, don't drive? See, the thing is, I'll, I'll let that out.
Maybe Toby can.
Yeah, nothing to say, I just want to make sure you're looking at the conditions I was saying.
Yeah. All right. So Toby, was what I was saying correct when we were talking about this compared to what Commissioner Erns thought that I, that it didn't say what I thought it said?
Well, I'm not gonna speak for what people said they thought it said, but I guess, yeah. So, so the condition number four is really dealing with the silage trucks. What your condition number seven would deal with is the milk trucks. And so, you know, staff's fully supported if you want to remove that requirement that the board would, would.
Well, because number four, we're not voting on silage in this, what we're here for tonight, correct?
What AJ and Seth had mentioned is Toby's been on all those emails too. So, so I wanted to defer to the board to help mediate that because Toby's not been able to mediate it with them, so.
Let's not snatch defeat from the, or snatch victory from the jaws of defeat either.
I think fours should stay in there.
All right, let's do this. We had a motion to amend, adding those two conditions. I think we're probably gonna end up with another motion, but.
Another CUP.
Well, this is gonna get changed again, that's why I'm asking you to withdraw your motion.
Yeah.
Make the motion that we've been talking about and.
Okay, I'll, I'll withdraw my original, so you need to withdraw your second.
I withdraw my second.
Okay, now, can I?
Madam Chair, my motion, my motion is to amend the proposed CUP to take out the language in section four and instead state that as a condition of the CUP, the applicant agrees to pay Delaware and Brooklyn Townships $25,000 a year for maintenance of the roads.
And then you would add seven and eight?
Seven and eight.
Yes.
Okay.
I would add Commissioner Otten's to other provisions.
Seven and eight.
I'll second that.
Well, I'm gonna let Commissioner Otten second it if she wants to.
I'm, I'm good with what we've discussed here, because I.
Do you want to second Commissioner, Commissioner Aaron's motion?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
I'll let you second it.
I will second your motion.
All right, we got a motion and a second. And then I want to make sure that the clerk understands the motion.
I do.
Okay.
Okay.
So the motion is to amend the decision of the planning commission as we've put on record here tonight. So if there's no further discussion amongst the commission, I will call for a vote.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Putnam?
No.
Landine?
Yes.
Motion carries. The decision of the Planning Commission is amended.
Madam Chair, I move at this time to pass the amended CUP.
Thank you, I've got a motion to pass the amended CUP.
Second.
I've got a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. You all came in good faith. I appreciate that. It is confrontational, it is controversial, but I really have faith that meetings like this, when we have patient people and patient elected leaders willing to talk these things out, we can get something done. And I feel like we got something done. And maybe, you know, the dairy feels like maybe they didn't get everything they wanted. Maybe the folks on the townships feel like they didn't get everything they wanted. But I'll repeat to you what most judges say. They say that's the best decision when everybody feels like they walk away and didn't get what they wanted. I do want to say this, though. I think this is important. There's three criteria that we consider when we look at a conditional use permit. Criteria number one, because Commissioner Wobber said it best, he said, you got to follow your ordinance. Here's what our ordinance says. Number one, we have to look at the impact of the proposed use on adjacent properties. That shall be a major consideration. The word "shall" means you have to do that. Number two, measures shall be taken to ensure that the proposed use does not alter the general character of the neighborhood. Well, we're taking measures here tonight to at least mitigate the alteration of the general character of the neighborhood. That's, the road's getting beat up. And C, this didn't get, and I don't think there'd be support for it, but the effects of noise, odor, traffic, air and water pollution, and other negative factors shall be eliminated or controlled through the use of screening, setbacks, and orientation. So if anybody tonight says something like, well, you all can't do this, and what are you talking about, and why are you doing this? Well, those three things allow us to. That's the law in Lincoln County, and that's pretty much the law in all of the state of South Dakota for that matter. So we're trying to get something done. I just want to say this, 25 years ago, the dairy industry was in the crapper in this state. There was like down to only like 4,000 head of cattle. And then Dennis Dugard jump-started that program and said, we need to get more dairy cattle into this state because those dairy cattle eat corn and other, other things that we produce and create vertical integration and all that, or value-added egg, excuse me. And we started doing that. Now we got what, how many head of cattle, we got dairy head in South Dakota?
The total economic impact in South Dakota, I believe, is 7 billion.
Yeah, so...
So it's like 230,000.
230,000. So from whatever it was when Dugard was there, I don't, yeah, 4,000 or 5,000, and now we're at 230,000 head like 30 years later. That's an economic miracle. But here's the, here's the thing that I was trying to do tonight. When Dugard and all those guys brought that dairy industry in, they forgot to do one thing. Have you all ever heard of the term unfunded mandates? Everybody hates it when the federal government does it to the state, right? And then everybody at the county level hates it when the state does it to the county or a city, right? And then now, everybody at the township level hates it when an unfunded mandate gets passed along to you. And you know what the unfunded mandate is here that the expansion of the dairy industry created? Townships. Where's a dairy going to end up being? It's most usually going to be in a township, and you all have no control over the dairy. You have to rely upon us as the county commission to do your work for you. And that unfunded mandate is what happens with this kind of growth. Because you know what? The growth does not pay for itself. People have been saying, I got all these letters here saying, look at all the great economics. It's true. It is economically benefiting a lot of people. It is not economically rewarding the township who the cost falls on. And that's who we have to look out for here. And I think that's what we tried to do tonight. We got lawsuits, we got bridge damage, we got infrastructure, we got pipelines, we got traffic fatality. We got to put an end to that. I am hoping 25 grand pays for 100 loads of gravel or whatever it is, I am hoping that that goes towards, it's not going to be a total 100% solution, nobody ever runs the table, nobody ever runs the table and gets 100% of what they want. I am hoping the township's got not what they wanted, but what they needed tonight. I am hoping. And look, just one other thing, I'd be remiss if I don't say this. What's being built out there, there is a concentrated collective use that is appearing out in your area. And it's only going to become, I hope you guys have success. Because you're, the people who wrote these support letters are right, it does economically help a lot of people. But we also need to be cognizant, and we need to bend over backwards for the people who bear the cost. And I hope that's what we did tonight. And as you all grow, I hope we keep that in mind, and, so I appreciate everyone coming to the table tonight. Thank you.
I would just like to say, as Chair, I'm very happy that everybody was just on their best behavior tonight, and I really appreciate that. So thank you all for that. But with that, if there's no other discussion or comments by the commission, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
We have to vote on the CUP, Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we did.
We haven't voted yet.
Well, let's vote.
Let's vote.
Joel got me, I thought we were done. Okay. Is everybody ready to vote?
I call a question, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Alicia, go ahead.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yeah.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. Now I'm ready for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Thank you, is there a second?
So moved, or second.
I've got a second from Commissioner Erns. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. It would be a no, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.